Welcome, everybody. We're going to call the meeting of the Neshoba Regional School Committee to order at 6:30 PM. And we're going to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, so everybody can join us. Stand and recite if you'd like.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of our citizens, our nation under God, in the midst of all with liberty and justice for all.
Alright guys, so the first matter on our agenda is public comment. I think that we do have a public comment, somebody who would like to come forth and speak. So all you need to do is just feel free to have a seat if you would like, or you can stand, it's up to you.
I'll stand.
Just let us know what your name is.
Okay.
And who you are, basically. And just note that all public comments have a three-minute limitation, so...
Yeah, I'm doing my best. I talk to myself and...
(laughing)
Okay, I'm Cecilia Sullivan. I live in Sterling, but I work at Luther Burbank Middle School in Lancaster. Dear school committee members, as district educators, we are concerned with the administrative decision that would eliminate the 8th grade Spanish World Language program and reconstruct it as a related arts and science special course. In this model, 6th, 7th, and 8th will meet twice a week for instruction, whereas under the current practices, students in the 8th grade meet every day for a full period. Without a dedicated full-year 8th grade course, the students will lose the opportunity to learn how to balance a five-course academic load similar to what they will get at the high school, preparation for AP coursework in their senior year, the opportunity to achieve the Seal of Bileiteracy due to less exposure to Spanish, an intensive language course that reinforces grammar and vocabulary skills, and the daily practice that is required to learn a language. This change also adversely impacts the ability of students to achieve the competencies outlined in the Portrait of a Neshoba Graduate. Studying Spanish helps students become culturally competent global citizens by developing students' understanding and appreciation for other cultures, supporting our district goals around equity, and celebrating the diversity of cultures represented in our district, increasing students' exposure to a diverse cultural experience in a mainly white community, encouraging a learner's mindset, sparking innovative ideas and problem-solving strategies, and helping students overcome obstacles such as language barriers and cultural differences beyond the classroom. This action would also increase class sizes in the 8th grade, which is a significant year in preparing students for the transition to high school. As freshmen, students must transition to a new school, new friends, and an increase in academic expectations. Spanish as a core subject in the 8th grade helps students prepare for the increased demand of five or more academics in their freshman year. Although some students will enter Spanish 1 in their freshman year, they will have a foundational knowledge of language and language structures that will help reinforce and grow their skills and help them become more proficient. Although the new program would have students exposed to Spanish in 6th grade, the daily consistency in practice will be missing, which is essential to language learning. With four academics, the class size will be less manageable, as behavioral issues in the middle school can be very challenging. The current 8th grade curriculum is rigorous and prepares many students to be successful in Spanish at the high school level. If the continuity and frequency of class time changes to two times per week, it would be more difficult for students to retain the information, and all students will begin Spanish 1 at the high school level. Spanish is currently the fifth academic core subject, so to a parent of a middle school student, it appears that 20% of the academic program would be missing. In addition to weakening the Language Department and students' understanding of Spanish, eliminating the 8th grade core course of Spanish will make the towns and the district less appealing as families weigh the new and varied options for their students' education. Thank you for allowing me the time and considering our request.
Thanks, Cecilia.
Should I leave this here or bring it to you?
Oh, I'll take that.
This is for the public press. Yes, and there's signatures in there.
Thank you.
(inaudible).
Is there another public comment?
Yes, please.
Okay. And just as part of our protocol as well, I wanted to let you know that we want to look to have new information presented with each public comment, so as long as you're not completely repeating, it should be...
And my letter is probably longer than the three minutes, so you'll be receiving an electronic copy of the full text.
Thank you.
My name is Maria Davis. I'm a Spanish teacher and World Language Department head at the high school. Dear members of the Neshoba Regional School Committee, we are writing to express our strong concern regarding the proposal to phase out the German program at the high school. As members of the Neshoba school community and advocates for providing our students with globally competitive education, we believe it is important to emphasize the significant value of the German language, not just for individual students, but for the broader community and the world they will engage in after graduation. The German language is invaluable, not only for students pursuing STEM careers, but also for those interested in international business, music, history, among other fields. By maintaining a robust German program at Neshoba, we are opening doors for our students by providing them with an inside track to these and other fields. We offer countless opportunities to Neshoba students through our German program. The German Honor Society offers accolades and scholarships, as well as an opportunity for high schoolers to volunteer, as they have done with the SPARC program, the free bilingual after-school STEM program at the middle schools. Similarly, Neshoba students have participated in National German exam, earning medals, awards, and full travel scholarships to Germany. All of these offerings and opportunities enhance their academic experience, providing students with additional ways to excel, gain recognition for their hard work, and build their resumes as they become graduates of our school. The German program at Neshoba is more than just an academic offering. German has been part of the academic program since the inception of our high school and over the years has formed strong ties within Neshoba communities. Through our longstanding exchange program with Vilehein, students gain firsthand experience, not only of another language, but another culture, forging global friendships and promoting international understanding. These cross-cultural interactions foster a sense of global awareness and empathy that extends beyond the classroom. By engaging with students from another country, both our German students and their peers develop a deeper understanding of the world and bring those perspectives back to their homes, schools, and future workplaces. The German program at Neshoba provides our students with invaluable academic and career advantages, opens doors to prestigious fields and universities, and fosters an environment of global engagement and cultural understanding. Reducing language offerings at Neshoba would limit access to these opportunities and undermine our efforts to develop culturally competent global citizens who are prepared for success in an interconnected world. We urge you to reconsider the proposed phasing out of the German program. It is not only a vital academic resource for our students, but an integral part of our school's mission to prepare students for the future. Thank you for your time and consideration, and we are hopeful that Neshoba will continue to offer this indispensable language program for the benefit of all our students. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Alright, I'm not seeing any others, so I think we're going to move the agenda. Thank you, everybody, in the gallery. I would highly recommend that everybody try to stay for the budget conversation, but I understand that's a big ask. So you can catch the rest of the meeting online, or you can stay, it's up to you guys. So, next item, guys, we're going to move the consent agenda, and I'm going to turn to...
Wait, can I say something?
No.
There's no case.
Oh, I'm mistaken.
The consent is due.
Oh, hold on, let's do the motion first.
Okay, sorry, I realized it a minute ago.
You want to talk about public comments.
Oh, no, no, this is about the disconsent agenda, sorry.
Sorry. Alright, so let's move the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda February 12, 2025.
Do I have a second?
Thanks, Sharon.
Any discussion?
Sorry. J-I-H, I forgot to tell you to leave that off. We're still working on that.
Which one?
J-I-H. The rest of it's fine, but that one should be struck.
Yes.
Yeah, J-I-H, we're still working on that. I forgot to make that clear to you.
Do you want to amend your motion?
Yeah, are there any others?
You can just move to striking.
Joe?
No, on a consent agenda, we can... I'll do it, I'll do it.
Thank you.
So, I will request, and I don't have to request it anyways, because we had it, I didn't do it yesterday.
Yeah.
But I would move the request that we remove J-I-H from the consent agenda.
That's enough. Please do.
No, no, the request does not require a vote. So what we'll do is, we'll move it out of the consent agenda, it will then fall back into the regular agenda, we can address it immediately after this, and then we can move to table to the next meeting.
Yep, thanks, Joe. Anything else that anybody wants pulled out of the consent agenda, to be voted on separately? Is there any other debate or discussion on the consent agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any votes? Hi, thanks, everyone. So, the consent agenda has passed, but let's talk about policy J-I-H, and Joe, I'll turn to you.
Yeah, I'll move to table any further discussion on J-I-H to our next meeting, at which time the Policy Subcommittee will come out with some further recommendations on that policy.
A second back, any discussion? Alright, all those in favor? Any votes? Thank goodness for Joe, and thank you for the policy discussion.
Sorry, I caught it, and I was like, oh, perfect.
Thought it was me for a minute.
No, it was me, it was mine.
I was doing these late Sunday nights.
Am I allowed to comment on that?
On J-I-H?
Yeah. We're waiting for guidance from council.
Oh, okay, that's why we're taking it.
Yes.
Okay, so, next item is the chairperson's update, and I have nothing beyond the actual agenda items here, and so we're going to move the agenda right to the Student Representative Report, so to Ava and Ryan, hi, guys.
Hi.
Alright, so, our junior class is doing a little fundraising, mostly the money's going to prom, but we're doing, they set up an online store pop-up shop, so it has a bunch of different sweatshirts and shirts and things like that. Like, they kind of highlighted that was, they have like kind of a sketch outline of the Neshoba building, and so, my class is going to be the last, they're scheduled to be the last to graduate out of that, so that was kind of like the thought behind that. So, our STUCO is planning a lift-up for April. The Green Team submitted their documentary to NASA, which will be then combined with 24 other schools around the country, and then posted onto their YouTube channel. And then, so, a little bit about our student representative thing for Massachusetts. Ava's going to Clark University for like a communications survey, and we're also doing like a NSCAC, like, different representatives come in to work on their own workshops, so Ava's working on her workshop right now for communications, which she can tell you what it'll be about. And my kind of job is to build all of the workshops into one kind of main presentation or something.
So, just to start with the Mazer, on March 7, I'm going to Clark for the MEAS Communications Conference, where I'm currently working on a workshop for advocacy and using your voice, so that'll be really exciting. I'm also working with NSVMA to kind of help students like us on school committees get voting rights, maybe, and also see how we can improve how, like, students' experiences on their school boards or their school committees. DECA has the states on February 28, and there are two DECA students, both seniors, Emily Barrett and Rihanna Bahari, who are collecting board games during February for North Star Family Homeless Shelter in Leominster. The games can be gently used, and there will be a donation bin in the lobby. And for sports updates, all the winter teams are doing really well. Last week, the swim team competed in sectionals in Springfield. Twenty-six members of the boys and girls track teams are competing in the MIAA D3 State Championship on Friday. The wrestling team heads to Booburn on Saturday to compete in D2 sectionals. And I just want to say that I think in my four years of being on the wrestling team, this year was our best year, and I'm just really grateful to like have a team like that. And then the boys and girls basketball teams, hockey teams, the Alpine Ski Team, and gymnastics team will all be competing in the MIAA State Tournament beginning after break. And that's all we have.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
That is a lot, and we're not surprised.
Do you want anything from us on like the foreign language or like the public comments? Are we allowed to talk about that at all, or is that...
This is your timeline, so if you have something you want to voice, please do.
So, in 8th grade, I had three different Spanish teachers, and like, one of them was kind of a part-time, just in between like our two Spanish teachers, and I think like just that smaller gap, it kind of hurt me academically in like Spanish. I'm taking the Seal of Bileiteracy this year, and then AP Spanish next year, and I think like a lot of what I learned comes from like those earlier years of Spanish and like the consistency. So even over the summer with that, with that kind of break and inconsistency, I think it makes it a lot harder to build off of where I was before, so that's kind of...
That's good.
That's all.
Any questions from the committee on the student report? Alright, so Ryan, I know you're getting back to DECA right now, Ava, did you do DECA as well?
No, I don't.
Okay, well, as always, guys, you're free to stay, free to also go about the business, I'm sure you've got some homework anyway, so thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, guys, next item up is the superintendent's report, and so I'm going to turn it over to her.
Madam Chair, thank you for that recognition. Thank you, committee, for being here tonight, and for everyone listening and everyone in our gallery. A couple of things we want to bring out in the superintendent's report are some announcements that I need to share with our committee. So, I'm going to do what I usually don't do, and that is read from the report to make sure that our residents at home can hear of the contents of this letter as well. This was sent to the Neshoba community on January 31st. Today, I want to address the rights and protections of individuals within our school community and the role that school districts play in immigration enforcement. In light of recent federal policy changes, our commitment to our core values as both an educational institution and a district remains unwavering. At Neshoba, we seek the value in each and every person who lives and works in schools, school communities. Our daily mission to ensure those individuals get what they need in a safe and caring environment. The information provided here today is simply to point out how, under state law and district policy, we protect individuals and their information accordingly. It's important for our community to know that the school district does not permit any level of law enforcement to enter the school buildings without proper court order documentation to arrest, detain, or interrogate individuals, students, or staff regarding immigration status. I will pause there to say, one of the reasons we have paused on policy J-I-H for the reference from legal counsel. The following information was developed through close collaboration with our district administrators, the chiefs of police of our three towns, our district legal counsel, and the Office of the Attorney General. I did speak with all three of our chiefs regarding the content of this letter and have their full support. Along with our existing policies, Neshoba's legal counsel, R.P.S. Tumulahane, has provided guidance they will use to navigate these updated Department of Homeland Security policies. This guidance is available to our community on their website and covers ICE visits of schools, school records, and student privacy and procedures regarding records and personally identifiable information. We can't advise individuals regarding immigration. The Massachusetts Attorney General has provided us with information and resources to share with our families. Additionally, our district has reviewed and maintained our communication policies and protocols with school personnel in the event that immigration officials arrive at the schools. State and federal law ensures equal access to education for all students regardless of race, color, sex, gender, identity, religion, national origin, sexual orientation, disability, or immigration status. More importantly, we believe that the true foundation of education lies in celebrating the diversity and uniqueness of every student and ensuring that all have access to the support of an inclusive environment they need to succeed. We will continue to provide this to our students. Coupling that is another piece that was crafted conjunction with some fellow colleagues, superintendents in other districts. As we look to, in response to, the Executive Branch's executive order titled Ending Radical Indoctrination in K-12 Schooling, I'm going to take this opportunity to clarify the EO's implications for the Neshoba Regional School District. The federal executive branch has limited authority over local public school districts. Its role is primarily to ensure compliance with federal laws passed by Congress and related regulations, such as those protecting civil rights. Decisions regarding curriculum and educational policies are made at the state and local levels. In Massachusetts, there are established legal and procedural safeguards that prevent the federal executive branch from unilaterally moving funding from local school districts. The Neshoba Regional School District is required to follow Massachusetts state law and policies in educating and supporting all students within our communities. And I will just cite the policies. Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 76, Section 5, Massachusetts State Regulation, 603 CMR 26.00, and guidance from the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. The Neshoba Regional School District remains steadfast in upholding federal education laws, including the Individuals with Disabilities Act, the Federal Civil Rights Law, as well as the Massachusetts State Laws, DESI Regulations, and School Committee Policies. The issuance of this EO does not alter those obligations. As always, in partnership with the Neshoba Regional School Committee, the district will carefully review any necessary adjustments in response to the EO. However, our focus remains unchanged, ensuring an inclusive, high-quality education for all students. We will continue to pursue the goals outlined in our strategic plan, emphasizing our core values and the portrait for graduate, which are more vital than ever. I'm going to pause there before we talk about the PRISM grant, to list any questions or comments from the committee.
I have a question. Could you just scroll back just a little bit? I don't know if I can do this or not, yeah, like, let me see, oh, yeah. It says, "In Massachusetts, there are established legal and procedural safeguards in front of the federal executive branch from unilaterally removing funding from local school districts." Can you explain that?
Well, this...
I guess my question is, saying federal executive, procedural safeguards in front of the federal executive branch from unilaterally removing funding from local school districts. Are we talking federal funds, or are we talking...
Correct, federal. So, as the EO was issued, that's a statement to say, the EO does not have authority for such positions in terms of the point cited here.
They can't pull back the funding?
Correct, those are, that's the authority of Congress.
Oh, okay, alright, that's all, okay. But, it says that Massachusetts, there are established legal and procedural safeguards. So what is it, maybe it's just a question of the way it's crafted, but, again, I'm just trying to learn here.
Sure.
If you don't know, Cecilia...
Yeah, yeah.
Where, in the Commonwealth, would we have authority to prevent federal executive branch from removing funds from local school districts?
They just don't have that authority, appropriations have gone by Congress. So we follow these Massachusetts general laws in terms of how we address those points.
Any other questions on those two statements? Yeah?
I would just like to say thank you, and I had the opportunity to meet with Dear J, and I shared this with them as well. As someone who works in schools and has colleagues in schools, I just want to say thank you to the administration for taking a clear stance and providing the guidance that I shared with colleagues, and pushing out that information to people in a time when there is confusion is extremely important, so thank you.
Alright, so move to the next item, the PRISM grant?
Yes, so I'm going to turn this over to Assistant Superintendent to talk about the PRISM grant. There will be implications when we talk about the budget later in the agenda, but Assistant Superintendent?
Thank you, Superintendent, I have just a bit of an update, not a super detailed update, but a little bit more information as time has progressed since the last meeting. So as the committee is aware, Neshoba's super excited that we were one of 15 districts to receive engagement with the PRISM grant opportunity through the Commonwealth Literacy Launch Initiative, as indicated in the consent agenda materials and the request to receive the initial grant funding for $30,000 to help support planning for that. A little bit more information that we've learned since then. Curriculum Director Laura Padgington and I have attended three meetings since the last school committee meeting. One was the PRISM launch with the Commissioner and the Secretary of Education, and then two follow-up meetings, one with the DESI leaders of the PRISM grant, as well as the professional development partners, which is TNTP. So, all of those groups have reiterated that the grant is outlined will provide substantial funding and support to participating school districts through FY29. Once fully engaged, the district will engage in bi-weekly meetings with the DESI partners through TNTP, that's the intensive support there, including professional development and coaching to focus again on K-3 early literacy. Specific next steps for us as it relates to the work with the planning grant and our work with the coach include this year, a literacy systems scan focused on K-3 and an MTSS action plan with focused and targeted needs identified through the scan. TNTP will be working directly with us and really engaging as an objective analyst at looking at our data, so more to come to share with the committee and our faculty and staff at the end of this school year. Moving forward, because of our acceptance into PRISM, we will be able to apply for continuation funding through FY29. This is akin to their Innovation Pathways Grant continuation funding, the school committee is aware of. The grant would support three different areas, including professional development, materials and assessments, such as our universal screener for K-3, including additional screening measures for targeted Tier 2 and intervention materials for Tier 3, again focused on K-3, as well as salary support. So, in terms of timeline, we're still waiting on specific timelines around the posting of the continuation grant and when we will learn about the funding received from the next portion of the grant partnership. You have to...
Thank you.
Wonderful, thanks, Laura. Any questions on the PRISM grant?
I know you said, Laura, that we're waiting to understand that second phase and what that substantial funding will look like. Any idea when that will be...
Yeah, this is what's tricky. So, as we learn of these programs with DESI's, we've participated, the structure and function of it is similar to the Innovation Pathways, and how that structured annual applications to continuing grant process. So while this has been earmarked in the governor's budget for this year, and this friend looked it up today, somewhere to get to $25 million, that bucket has not been appropriated. We anticipate it's going to be appropriated late spring, possibly the summer. So, understanding those appropriations in terms of potential budgetary offsets for us don't imply at this time what they accept, and we'll talk a little bit about that. We feel more confident in the non-salary items than we do in the salary offsets that we might be able to get from that grant, but we're going to have to learn about that this spring.
Not to the governor's budget?
No, this is in the current budget, but they haven't appropriated that, those earmarked funds. So that will come as, so as we're in the first phase here, and we got the $30,000 grant to do that study phase and the application phase, it's the result of that work that will tell us what we're funding this for, because they will appropriate it based upon the size of school systems and the needs of those school systems.
And just to be clear, you said that that money will drop into our hands during this fiscal year?
FY26.
Oh, it is for next fiscal year?
FY26.
The planning grant will be for this fiscal year.
Yes.
The next iteration substantive funding will be for FY26.
Any other questions? Alright, everybody, so thanks for that.
Yeah, we're going to continue to keep on it. We're doing all that we need to do to make sure that we're eligible to receive the continuation funding.
Alright, everybody, so we're going to move now to new business. We have a couple of items relative to Dear J, and I'm going to turn it over to Jackie, if you don't mind, Jackie, to walk us through this.
And I'm actually sending Alita a copy of the decision-making tool, so that can be added to the materials. So Dear J had the opportunity to meet since our last meeting, and I'm pleased to share that, of course, all the people who had stepped forward, bringing up the current number of Dear J members to 10. We also had another individual resident from the town of Fulton interested and shadowed and viewed the last meeting, so I'll do a background with her as well. Structurally, I think that Dear J had made the decision to take on new members, which was really exciting, and if this last person is interested, then that would bring them up to their full 11 appointed members. So I may have another name to bring forward to the committee at a later date. The other thing that I want, do you want me to...
Do you not want to, are we not appointing that person tonight?
I did not have that name as confirmed, so...
I trust, how is it following?
Out of respect for that person, I want to make sure that I am not saying yes on their behalf, so I will reach out to them.
Okay.
Please, do something. Something shut off?
Yeah.
Did you want me to show the decision-making tool? Did you want me to show the decision-making tool?
Um, do you want me to send it to Alita so she can bring it up?
Yeah, of course.
And I can queue it while you're... I just didn't want my email out there.
I'll queue it up while Jackie's emailing it to Alita and you can maybe email it to the entire committee.
I will do.
So everybody, Dear J is really excited that some hard work that they've been digging in on for a couple of rotations has finally come through to fruition and that is the equitable decision-making tool. This is something that the equity audit also suggested we should employ as a school committee and that, and then the school committee thought this might be something that we could use in the subcommittee conversations. So I don't necessarily think you need to look at the decision-making tool right now. I think that what we're trying to do is ask your permission to have one of the subcommittees pilot it.
Yeah, and I guess just to give a tiny bit more context, this is, it's kind of a joke, but it's version 0.0 and the intentionality around that is that this is a working document. It's one thing to have a tool piloted and then, you know, with feedback in open meeting, kind of talk about whether or not this is working and make further versions, so that would be a future iteration of 1.0, 2.0, et cetera, et cetera. But I think it's just to make sure that we're keeping this tool relevant to the work that we're doing at the time and then also that there's some level of a feedback loop with Dear J around implementation. And the decision-making equity tool subcommittee, they've worked on this on and off for the past two years, so this is very exciting for them to bring to us and I just want to say thank you to all of the committee members that participated in this development because it's not only visually beautiful, I really appreciate that, but I think content-wise it's really, will be very meaningful, I think, to our work.
And so the pilot, we're looking to pilot it in which subcommittee?
Policy.
And I think Amy, you guys had a little conversation about the possibility of this and Amy's on board, is the chair of policy.
Yep, yeah, we talked about April.
And so I really just want to get the temperature of the committee, can you give me a thumbs up if you're okay with policy piloting this? All right. Does anybody have any questions about this?
Is there more below?
Yes.
There?
Yep. Is it in your email?
Yep.
And Alita will put it in the materials if you guys want to give it a deep dive.
Yeah, it's five pages, so that would be...
Oh, I see. And policy will not only kind of use it in, as they proceed with their important work and I think we thought policy was a good place to put it because there's so much that is relevant to matters of equity in our policy manual and also that you guys are so, you're kind of really busy and doing the line share of the subcommittee work right now, so we'd be pleased to put it. Also, Amy is a sucker for hard work, so she's looking to, yeah, thanks guys, and Jackie too, and of course, everybody else on policy. So I got a thumbs up, any other questions on the tool? All right, so they're not only going to use it to do the work, they're also going to vet it and a Dear J member is going to also be in attendance at policy just to be a sounding board and then anything that we see that is a glitch of any kind, then we'll bring it back to Dear J and then Dear J can advise us further on how to revise it, the 1.0, the 2.0. Fantastic, so thank you Jackie.
Thank you.
And thank you Dear J.
Yep.
Really good job. All right, everybody. Let's move now to the next item and that is the district calendar presentation.
Thank you Madam Chair. In our intensive focus recently on trying to solve our budget challenges, I neglected to forward the link to the budget, to the calendar to Alita for posting, so that's being mailed to you right now and we're putting in the meeting materials and it's presented on the screen, so please offer me some grace in that air there.
You been doing other things?
It's a bit busy. So at this time, I want to introduce our Director of Human Resources, Ms. Jessica Murdock, and she's going to walk you through the proposed calendar for next year. Madam Chair, this is an informational piece tonight, it will be included in the consent agenda at the next meeting.
Great.
Ms. Murdock?
Well, thank you Chairperson Vivarito, members of the school committee, and Superintendent Downing. I'd also like to thank the committee member Sharon Park for her participation and guidance on the committee, it was very helpful as being new to NRSD, so thank you Sharon. I'm pleased to share for consideration the academic calendar for 2526 and I will point out some of the edits and then if there's anything else I can answer, please let me know. So the calendar review committee met, we reviewed the calendar and made some edits to the 2526 calendar. So some notations, we've added the first days of school for kindergarten and pre-K on August 28th and August 29th to the calendar. The committee had also recommended an adjustment for November, I just bring it up because I wanted to make sure that we were all on the same page, that they were looking to change the dates for early release and full-day parent-teacher conferences to occur on November 24th and 25th. However, due to early literacy screening, those assessments have to be to the parents within 30 days of that assessment occurring. So unfortunately, if we moved those dates, it would create multiple more meetings for K through 2 and then it wouldn't meet the requirements of the 30 days. So we did leave it on the November 6th and 7th date. The high schools requested early release dates for midterms and final exams rather than a late start date, which I believe is new to the district. The rationale for the changes are as follows. Principal Boynton shared that the current exam blocks are intermingled with regular class periods, which make things very confusing and also creates inequable time for classes with exams at the beginning of the week versus the end of the week. They continue to also see an increase of student dismissals when they do not have an exam block, even after the messaging that attendance counts and is considered. The schedule would be more predictable and less confusing for the students and for faculty and staff and then there will be no need to have a lunch block to serve hot lunches, it would just be a grab-and-go option for the students at that time. And lastly, the changes will maintain the required time on learning hours, so they verified that with the guidance consent of the high school. And then you'll know on January 20th through January 23rd of '26 and June 9th through June 11th of '26 are the dates and I've highlighted those in red. Professional development days will continue to be offered on Fridays, that was the consensus of the committee. We've also added March 20th, 2026 to the calendar to notate the incoming kindergarten screening, so that means that current kindergarten students would not have school that day. We've also added the K through eighth grade trimesters. And then we've also left a reminder for faculty, should not have quizzes, tests, projects or assignments for students on their religious holidays and the students' absences will not incur any penalties when observing those religious holidays. And then we believe those for all the, and we get changes. There, if there's any questions.
Very, very good, so let's, did you want to be the guide, a minute or two to digest this, not looking to rush you, but Sean Dorr, maybe you can ask a question while we're looking.
It's a question about holidays. I recall on the current calendar, we don't actually specify what the holidays are, we do here, is that an intentional change?
I think that was unintentional, Mr. Simon, and so if we're reviewing that just today, we're taking that off, so it's consistent with previous calendars.
Awesome.
Because we'll inevitably leave out something, is your concern?
No, 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 it's just we didn't specify like Christmas or something, we just said holiday.
So that was a recommendation that actually came in partnership with our DJ, Dear J, a couple of years ago, we want to be consistent with that, so I think that was just an administrative error, but our behalf and we'll fix that, so when this is included in the meeting materials for the next meeting, you'll see that, as it'll be in the consent agenda for...
So just to be clear, you're going to leave the two textual paragraphs, you're just going to eliminate this piece of the holidays? Amy?
I actually like having them listed on there.
Yeah, but maybe like...
I just think it brings awareness, like it makes it easier for people to remember where they are. I think that, I know that there has been discussion on this in previous years and I think an easy way to solve, you know, the issue of leaving one off versus, you know, excluding a holiday that might be celebrated by somebody in our community is just ask our community, do you have a holiday that collects some information? And if somebody writes back and says this is the holiday they'd like to be listed on here, we listen.
There's been some pretty extensive research done, there was a calendar subcommittee for Dear J in previous years and there were recommendations that were made. I can certainly bring this back to Dear J for conversation and consideration. I will say though, that one thing that has stood out to me in looking at the calendar, because I'd actually linked the old calendar in for the whole year and then I was like, I actually have to be here in person, so thank you for that email, but we, on our district website, we have a disability calendar and so I wonder if there would be a nice way to like synthesize all of that information into one district calendar that's on the website or something to, I think, to meet everybody's needs.
Any other comments? Yeah.
Just a question, a separate question, but not about that.
Not related to the holiday piece?
Yes.
All right, so hang on.
Go ahead, yep.
I will say that I think the counterargument, I don't necessarily have, I'm not taking a side, I'm just trying to present the counterarguments that have come before the committee before on this issue and that is that the calendar is a tool to show the days we are not in school. It's not meant to be a value statement and that this document here should be as plain as it can be. However, creating other tools to help the educators of our district know or maybe try to anticipate when Rosh Hashanah will be next year is useful. And so we have talked in the past about creating sidecar documents, really that are maybe just internal. And so do those exist?
Yes, that's exactly right, so it would be a link to that sidecar, exactly.
Yeah.
I was just calling your attention at the bottom of this document, it actually does list some additional holidays.
Those are the recommendations for our Dear J.
Yeah, it was a link to an ABL website. And I, my concern after that, we kind of, that was the decision of the committee, once that became a new practice, I guess my concern is that it makes it, it's just like another step removed from just getting to a date that exists, that's up there. That would make it easier to bring awareness, but you know, whatever the will of the committee is, that's just my feeling as somebody who observes one of these holidays and finds that it's not on the forefront of most people's minds.
Does the sidecar include more than the one holiday?
I would have to go back and look at how the document that was produced by Dear J to look at that, so tough to answer on the spot at the moment.
I think that would be interesting. I was working on it, wondering if a sidecar included many holidays.
Yeah. Ava?
Just clarifying, are you looking to make the calendar more simple or more inclusive of holidays?
So what I was saying is that the counterargument that has kept the calendar from listing holidays wasn't an effort to simplify it and eliminate any kind of value structure that people could interpret into it or out of it? But then the need for educators to be aware of why certain students are out and how they can assist in providing them excused absences needs to be somewhere. I will say as a teacher myself, I look at this very rarely from my district. This is not the tool I would go to to ask myself, what do I need to do for my students? I think it actually needs to be a different method so that educators can be more effective. Like this thing shouldn't be the thing that helps educators know what to do. I don't think that's fair to just put it on a list and then say, all you teachers need to figure it out.
Yeah, we have a lot of really great tools already on the district website. Thank you. It wouldn't necessarily need to live here, because this is, to your point, for easy use and access.
It's just the days the schools are operating. I want to put that to the committee that that's what I would support is to kind of, to use one of your favorite words, scrub this calendar of all those pieces and then encourage our administration to create other methods for our kids to get what they need from those days, build awareness.
So for clarity, in terms of preparing this for the next meeting, we will proceed forward with the calendar under the construct consistency to how this current calendar was produced. Okay.
Okay. So can I ask a question? So then, for all of the days that the school is closed for federal holidays, will it, should we specify then? I don't remember what's on the this year's calendar, does it specify federal holiday or state holiday?
These listed here are the federal holidays.
So does it, but on the calendar then, would it, does it say September, I'm reading out this one now, but September 1st, no school federal holiday?
Excuse me?
Does it just say the date?
Holiday.
I'm on the calendar right now.
So it's holiday.
And so you would eliminate Christmas, you would eliminate those words and just say holiday?
Right.
So like President's Day would be holiday?
Yes.
I think that simplifies things.
That was a recommendation we received from Dear J seven years ago.
I guess what I'm wondering is would it be beneficial to specify the school closing is for a federal holiday? And then we're getting away from what we're talking about is the needing to name all of the additional holidays that are, you know, like some of these that are listed below that the school is not closed for? I'm not sure.
Like Good Friday? It's closed on Good Friday.
No, no.
You guys have some on Good Friday. So you wanted to just say holiday, because some of them are states and then there are federal.
I was just asking the question.
That's kind of how it is right now. It's just listed as a holiday. And the previous version of this calendar didn't have any of these religious observances on it. But I think that we need to solve the problem of how to make the dates of the religious observances more accessible for faculty, so that they can observe the policies we have around quizzes, tests, homework, and then I'll be satisfied.
I recommend we just make this an agenda, I think we're supposed to consent.
Next time. Okay, very good. All right, so we had other questions, Robyn?
Probably a very obvious question, one that's probably been asked a million times before, but why do we start the school year three days before a holiday weekend? Like a lot of other towns that I obviously know people, they start the 2nd of September.
Actually, the vast majority start before now.
Okay.
Yeah, they really are, I'll tell you one big school system that's moving to that next year, that would be the Newton Schools. So the three school systems I've worked in in Massachusetts all started the 25th day before the holiday. Lots of reasons. It comes to, we need to give 180 days of schooling before the end of the year. When you start after the holiday, depending, sometimes you can be starting as late as September 8th. So if you're starting at September 8th, you have five snow days there, if you have anything past that, you're running risk of going across July 1, which you cannot do as you're crossing physical years. So moving before and that is, the school system's been pressed up against that in recent years.
Okay. Interesting, okay.
I think that, I just noticed that it's still, there's still category here for late starts at the high school, but I think what you've said is that those are being replaced by early releases at the high school.
Yes, I didn't change that until we had the meeting tonight to determine whether or not that was acceptable to the school committee.
I think teenagers won't like this idea, but for all the reasons you said, it makes a lot of sense from the district's perspective. Like I know that my high schoolers really, really appreciate the chance to sleep in during midterms, because they are very... during midterms, because they are very intense.
Can you, can you explain again?
Maybe we should hear from our students.
When you came to this conclusion, who were the stakeholders who weighed in and thought it was a better idea?
So the Calendar Committee was made up with several representatives from the middle school system, the high school and elementary. The high school representatives were Kable and our principal, Jody Sbeck, our guidance counselor. And I'm trying to think, there was another member, but I believe that was those two from the high school. Principal Boynton had brought it to, or her faculty was my understanding, but also had conversations with the administrators at the high school. And then based on the facts, happy to repeat those, they decided or felt that it would be more appropriate to do the early release due to the challenges that they were facing related to the classes, the exam periods, the attendance and that. So they, so it was a recommendation that they asked that they bring forward to the committee.
Great. And so Ava, putting you on the spot here, do you want to weigh in on this?
I mean, I personally.
You're a senior, so this is not going to.
Yeah. I like the late starts. I mean, I also leave school when I don't have a midterm, which I know I'm not supposed to, but I, I just think it works better, especially with preparing for midterms, because we only have three, during midterm week, we only have three classes a day, and they're really, really long. So like, to have the extra time to sleep in in the morning, I mean, I think every high schooler prefers that, too. I don't really see why we would get rid of them. I don't think I understand what early release would do. I don't know.
Would they eliminate the classes, and it would just be exams, and then students would go home? That's my expectation, so.
That is how I, how I assumed that.
So you would have two 90-minute blocks, thereabouts, maybe a break in between, and then dismiss the kids, I assume, before the buses have to roll at, you know, where they have to go. But we do that, we do this at our school. The kids probably would prefer to sleep a little later, but.
They don't complain about it, actually. I don't know if they.
There's no, they don't know what you're doing, rather than having that. So they don't know. But I will say from, I don't know if any of you guys want to weigh in on what your high schooler does with the late starts, but my kid's not waking up early to study, and so.
Mine does.
So maybe something to do. Mine doesn't. I don't know that the kids leaving at 11 go home and study either and use that additional time, but I will say that the way it's structured right now, what they do is they go to a midterm, and then they go to a regular class.
And prep.
And it's, and it's time on learning that is like, that sometimes it's prep, it's really haphazard, it's not haphazard on purpose, but like, it's a weird schedule, I think, for educators to manage, especially as they're assessing all of this stuff and grading, and it's real, I think it would be more effective to hit pause on everything else and just assess. And so I'm kind of, I stand with the faculty too, sorry Ava, and like forcing the kids to get up earlier and just like go take their tests and then leave for three or four days. And that's all they're focused on. There's not, there's this weird lunch period in the middle of the day that nobody knows really what to do with, and then you go take another exam.
Well, I'll be honest, too, the way we do it is nice, too, when kids need longer for the test, because the day's over, they just stay, and I have kids just stay and they continue testing if they need extra time. So it's very convenient for that as well.
Or get extra help.
Yeah.
They can get extra help.
Yeah.
All right, so any other points or questions on the calendar? All right, so we'll pick this up as a regular agenda item next time around, but thank you so much.
Thank you.
Ms. Friend, for coming and presenting. We're going to move on. All right, so the next item on the agenda is Policy IKF, and Kirk is going to talk to us a little bit about what our competency determination is, or could be, in the coming, not necessarily this year, but in coming years.
Thank you. Yes, while Policy IKF is written twice in the agenda, and it entered the next poll of Policy first reading as well, I want to just take a moment to point out a recommendation that I'm making in Policy IKF, and that recommendation is to remove the NCAS requirement from our local policy. And so as we talked about this, I gave the committee notice of this at a previous meeting. And looking more, our association has done some surveying across Massachusetts, and to say it's inconsistent would be a compliment, because it's very challenging. What we looked at is, while it was reported that our students are not at risk of, for this year, of meeting competency determinations for graduation, we do have students in added district requirements that are subject to Nishova's graduation requirements based upon their individual education plans, and we found that there would be some discrepancies and possibly differentiation in treating the students in those placements. So I think due to the complexities, I'm recommending that we strike that clause out of our policy while the governor works with state associations and boards on developing the new competency determinations. All the bills are filed already for this year that will be considered with this legislative year. And so it will be over the next year that the governor's office will be working with school and community leaders across the state to get a recommended statute put before and filed next filing season that would forecast an enactment in the state for possibly FLE27. So in the meantime, I think it's wise of us to strike our line of the NCAS requirement as we work on that. We have a well-developed policy, our graduation requirements are based on the MasCor requirements, and as you can see, so students are still taking that rigorous course, nothing has changed about that. So to align ourselves to what the intention was of voters with question two in the fall, and so as to set the table for what ultimately will be coming, that's my recommendation.
First question is, is that all said, are kids to still take all of the NCAS tests?
I'm so happy to send that. Thank you. Yes, this is a message we sent out to families last year. NCAS is a requirement. All students are expected to take the NCAS. There is no opt-out provision for the NCAS. It doesn't exist. And so with that, we still are expected to, and behold unto the Department of Education for such things, school accountability reports being a major factor to that. So we still are required to administer the NCAS.
Any other questions?
Yeah. Is that in this document? I feel like I just, I read that today, I feel like. Was, is it in this document?
No, this document is just the policy on our graduation requirements, which you can interpret right now as our competency determination, and it simply has the line that says, "and successful," a passing score on the NCAS. I'm recommending we just strike that line.
But the part about that every student still must take the NCAS, and there's no exemption from that.
We wouldn't put that in a policy on graduation requirements.
Do you have to know, was it in something that was in the meeting materials? Like the requirement? I think it's just from federal law. Or is it every, does it, every child succeeds?
Yeah, it's Massachusetts.
Or Every Student Succeeds Act?
It doesn't matter. I read it today. I think, my question is, or my thought is, that that information, we need to make sure that we are sending that information out when NCAS is coming around, which is pretty soon, so that it is still very clear to parents that kids have to take the NCAS, and that it's important.
Would you mind recognizing Ms. Friend?
Ms. Friend? Perhaps you would like to weigh in on this.
I heard what Ms. Fox said, but my hearing is muted, so I caught half of it, but.
In terms of school noticing their communities, notifying their communities.
And certainly teaching online learning will share communication with our families to articulate that participation is required. I know Dr. Boynton also has articulated that in a program of studies for each of those core competency areas where NCAS is required as well. Principals will also follow up with messages to their school committees as well. The NCAS provides us with good information about curriculum and instruction and student needs, and we do see the information from NCAS as helpful to us as it relates to teaching online.
Thank you. And I ask back. Let's go Scott, or no, actually Scott, do you mind if I hear from Ava, because she might inform what you're going to say. Go ahead, Ava.
Well, I just have a question, because I'm on school council as well, and we're working on a handbook. Is NCAS and how there's no option to opt out be specified in the handbook?
Are you asking if it can be or if it is?
If it should be.
Should be.
Yeah, I think that is a question, Ava, I would encourage you to take that straight to Dr. Boynton, make that recommendation, and we can make it clear there, yeah?
Okay.
Great suggestion. I know, I can tell you right now, Dr. Boynton is listening to this meeting and is already taking that note down.
She's actually, she's on the handbook doc right now. All right, Scott.
Is there any data with respect to, like any studies have been done with respect to the student performance on standardized tests when there are or are not ramifications for taking it? Because having been a parent of a student who had a very lazy for attitude towards standardized tests, I wonder how, you know, do students perform better when they needed to achieve a milestone versus.
I can't say, as I'm aware of a study right now, I would suspect there might be some done. You just nailed our number one concern when this was voted down in the fall. And it was why I was against that position, and so the competency determination work that is going to be done at the state level now, it's going to be focused on the Massachusetts frameworks and really looking at what are the courses that we expect our high school students to graduate with and to be able to show their proficiency in. And that's going to be sort of the spirit in which this is guided, to ensure that there's some sort of standard across the state in terms of graduation requirements, so you don't have graduation requirements that vary from town to town to town to town.
That's actually not what I was trying to get at. You were talking about using the test results as a means of determining student achievement and comparing across schools and stuff like that. And if students aren't doing their best work on the test, is it really telling you what you want to know about how well?
Well, I believe what I said is it's used to calculate our accountability reports in terms of the validity of the effort that a student puts into the test. I can't say as I can guarantee that.
Yeah, I think you're asking a political question, Scott, and it's like a grave concern, really.
Yeah.
But, I mean, I think that we can't really bother ourselves with that, because these are things that are beyond our control. I think it'll be interesting to see if they invent like a new NCAS and just call it something else, and then force this all to come out. So, we shall see, I think.
I will say, our educators are outstanding at creating a culture and a climate that is, that brings a level of importance to it, so the students, we observe and see them giving their absolute best effort when they are taking it. So we're on a new climate where that requirement isn't there anymore, and so it'd be interesting. The third grader isn't thinking about the graduation requirement, but the 10th grader might be. So it'll be interesting to see.
Any other questions, Amy?
Yeah, could you just help me, I know that this came up a few years ago while I was on the school committee, but why is it that we have a minimum total for 90 credits to graduate, but every student is expected to enroll in a minimum of 25 credits each year? If they don't add up, if they take 25 credits each year, then it's up to 100 credits. But if you have a student who is a senior who has 89 credits, they're still, because of this statement, required to enroll in 25 credits per year. Can you help us understand that?
Would be hard for me to understand why the crafters of the policy wrote that way, but Ms. Friend, I might ask you if you have any historical knowledge on that.
I think we'd have to.
So I do know that we want to keep students engaged and keep them in school, and so by requiring 25 credits, you're, students are expected to be in school, because we have to ensure that, including safety.
But this also goes back to a blip in our history when we dropped the credit total by year to better match with the 90. And what ended up happening, and with our oldest, is that kids were able to only, by their senior year, they were only taking four classes, and then they weren't meeting the time on learning requirements by the state. So we had to pump it back up. It also allows for kids to, who fail classes, to kind of not have to do credit recovery programs, which are a nightmare, and that's probably very few kids, I don't know, maybe it's tons of kids, I don't know. But it's just another safety net. Ava?
I'm just going to add to that, it's kind of a safety net, because you really only need 22, 23 to meet that 90, but they, they make you take 25, so if you do, like you said, fail a class, you still have those credits, like the extra credits.
All right. Any other questions on that? So can I ask a process question? It looks like you've already redlined it. Did Policy weigh in on this at all?
We looked at it together, yes.
Okay. And so will this be in the consent agenda next time around?
Yeah, we have to fix one other thing Scott caught that we, there was, under the applied arts or something, it just says year, but it should say one year. Who's down?
Page two.
Oh.
Middle page.
Right there, yeah. Yep.
Because it's technology and applied arts, it doesn't tell how many years you need.
Oh, okay.
Yep, so we're going to fix that, but other than that.
We're.
Oh, look at the policy. She does. It just says year, as opposed to one year.
Yep.
And one of those has to have a technology designation.
Yep, we'll correct that.
And so do you think that, are there any other comments? I'm wondering if you guys feel like you're going to be ready to vote on this next time around. That was the only change made, that one redline, right? Two.
And then the.
There were two, two sides.
There was an error.
And then we also have to put a period at the end of that statement. Other than that.
Going to be a third meeting, yeah.
Can I ask a question about that?
Um, so, for, if you go up just a little bit, so each of the academic courses are
four-credit courses, yes?
Not all.
Not all of them.
Year-long are four.
Except for a science that might be more.
Six or eight.
And labs are weighted as well.
Right. I guess what I'm wondering is, so, but wellness, you have to take four years of wellness, but that's only eight credits, because wellness is a one semester class, yes? So would it be, that's the, right, two credits here, but for example, you can take four years of English for eight credits and 16 credits. Like, would it be beneficial to specify what the number of credits is?
No, because it depends on what courses you choose. So certain, certain courses have more credits.
Right, the science, some of the science classes have more credits.
I will say too, Sharon, that when you look at the handbook for wellness, two credits is the only option. They're all two-credit classes.
Except the senior year is split, and each one is one.
Oh, man. But, because you can choose.
Yeah. No, you have to take both, and in a sequence. I would say it's, I think where the complexity should lie is not in the policy, but in the program of study, because that will, depending on the year, it could change, but this is like the spirit of what is required for graduation.
Excellent. Any other questions?
Three hundred.
Yes, me sure. All right, now seeing any other questions, we're going to move to this item, and this might be ready to fall into the consent agenda next time.
Yep.
Okay. Next item here I see is the policy, the, a variety of policies here that are going to be our first reading.
Well, except for ECAF, we threw that in there because it went to the lawyers, and there was a good bit of change, so I threw it in there for people to look closely at.
It's a restart.
Yep.
A restart. So guys, you have the spreadsheet that is in the meeting materials, and you also have the versions all listed there, because Alita is awesome. So I'm going to let Amy kind of drive the bus here, and you guys can provide to her any of the concerns that you have on this list of policies, anything that you want Policy to reconsider and share next meeting.
Yeah, we didn't have anything particular we wanted to call out, other than just say that ECAF was up there again for the reason.
Was there anything that jumped out at you guys when you were reviewing?
Yeah, we talked about the first reading policies.
Yeah.
All right. I'm just going to make a comment, and I'm going to kind of use Policy KBA to kind of dovetail with the, well, ever-popular, was it JIA?
dovetail with the, well, ever popular, was it JIA for search interrogations?
Mm-hmm.
I would ask that the policy subcommittee take a really close look at the language of the second paragraph of KBA. While I'm not wholly enamored with most of anything the MAS C puts out, I find that the language in the second paragraph is significantly more palatable than the suggestion under JIH that schools have legal custody of children during the period of time in which they're in school. Without getting too much on a tangent, Madam Chairman, I spent the last two weeks pounding my head against the wall trying to figure out where the nexus was between the term legal custody and the policies that are promulgated by the MAS C. The only definition I can find, the only one I have knew, is under chapter two of the general laws, which is the divorce statute, which talks about legal custody. Shared legal custody, sole legal custody, what have you. I did reach out to Tracy Novick and I asked her if she could articulate for me where the MAS C creates the nexus between the term legal custody and what the schools have with regards to children during the period that they're in school or extracurriculars. So with that in mind, Madam Chair, I would just ask the policy subcommittee, take a look at this language under KBA, compare and contrast to JIH. I think that this is significantly representative of the dynamic of the relationship between parents and educators than the language in JIH, so.
Joe, just for clarity, remember, my helper's in today, but the second poll is which, was which one?
JIH.
JIH, yeah. JIH. Yeah, JIH infers that schools have legal custody of children. And I know as a matter of course that legal custody is a term that we use with regards to chapter two of the general laws, which is the divorce statute. Parents are granted when they're separated, shared legal custody, sole legal custody, what have you. And again, I asked the MAS C to kind of bridge that gap for me. Where do you come off using that term with regards to schools? And I'm just pointing out to the policy subcommittee that I think that this language in the second paragraph is significantly more representative of the dynamic of the relationship between students, parents and school educators.
Thank you. If I could just go down this rabbit hole, just for a second, I wonder.
Okay.
So, is the suggestion that instead of us having custody, whether with this, we have temporary guardianship?
I think it says, it says childcare.
Yes.
Services of childcare for students during the time when they are under the supervision of school personnel.
And in JIH, it says, as proposed, they have legal custody of students. So that's the concern.
Not with Joe as far as that's not appropriate. What I'm saying is the alternative, we have temporary guardianship.
No, I don't, I think you would be, that would be new. That would be new language. So that's a possibility that policy could consider. Amy, can you remind me, JIH is still hanging out there?
Yeah, that's the one that we're still waiting on guidance from.
Okay, so maybe that will solve itself when Mr. McCarron gets back.
I'll add it to my follow-up, you know, to get that back.
Thank you.
Sounds like calendar.
Have you had any occasion to reach out to Ms. Novick by email? And what's the timeframe on her response, you know?
Tracy is not the one that we reach out to. We actually, so she's, she's fine.
She's not.
But she's more the budget expert.
Okay.
We actually do have a new Dorothy Presser.
I thought it was Tracy, not Tracy.
No, Dorothy retired and so, we have a new liaison at MAS C. And Amy, if you, I mean, I guess, I can email you all her contact information. You all do have the right or the ability, the leniency to call or email that person whenever you need guidance on any matter. Like, if I were being a tyrant and you were, you were looking to like get some help with your tyrant chair, any one of you could reach out to her and get some advice on how to manage anything that's happening. So it's not just my conversation with her. And Amy's been in contact with her quite a bit.
Yeah, yeah, she's been really good about.
So maybe I'll email that contact information out one more time so everybody has it. It's been a while. She's relatively new, maybe a year out. Any other questions about policies? All right, guys, I'm moving the agenda to, well, we might consider the main event and we are, I would like the record to show, we are 10 minutes ahead of schedule.
I can tell.
And so, well.
The pressure.
I would be fine if this matter took 10 additional minutes, because I think it is very, very important. So, the first thing that we're going to do is look at the bond sale, which Ross is going to manage for us, but I'll turn it over to Kirk to queue it up.
Madam Chair, I will immediately direct it to Finance and Operations Director Ross Mulcain.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to share this, it's good news this evening. So, in sort of line with the strategy that Bond Advisory Group set a couple of summers ago into the school year of that, that time, we are bonding in stages for the high school project. So this recent sale is a $75 million bond, the details of which you can see here and with the attached documents. One thing that I want to make sure is clear, is that because the premium size and how everything works out with the math, the average interest cost on this is just over 4%, which is great, because that's right in the bottom range of the modeling that we did during the building project information sharing. And further good news on that, the payment for the first year, which is next year in FY '26, is lower than the original estimate from our financial advisors. So that, the towns will see that information as well, which is good news. So you'll see the attached vote of the school committee, the Nushoba Regional School District attached. Instead of reading the entirety of the vote document, our legal bond council has recommended the following motion language, which Mr. Cohen has, and at this point, I can take any questions if necessary and go from there.
Yeah, before the motion hits the floor, why don't we ask questions if we have them?
I'd like to make a motion.
Oh, you want to?
No, 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 I'm going to make a procedural motion.
Oh, okay.
So it'll make me sleep better at night.
Okay.
I'd like to move that the actual language of the motion that Bond Council had prepared, at least put up on the screen here by Ms. Masterson, because I don't think that we got the vote, the vote, the votes that are certified in our packet, but I don't, I didn't see the actual.
It's the second page.
That's the vote.
Well, that's in the meeting materials, Joe. So instead of the word voted, it was just saying.
No, no, what I'm, what I'm saying to you is, this is, we're, we're voting to adopt that language, but we haven't voted anything. But I'm, it's, forgive me for being belt and suspenders here. All I'm asking is, is that we, the motion is, Madam Chair, that we include the motion language in the meeting materials and we display it right up here, so that I can refer to that and say, I move as presented here for the committee. And then, I can then certify that vote, which I have right here.
I second the motion.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
So I, sorry.
On his motion?
On his motion. All those in favor projecting? All right, any post? Okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to steal your time of Mr. Mulcain, but.
Totally fine.
Okay.
All right. And so, we are going.
I trashed it, so now I'm digging it back out.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right, because I didn't think it was needed.
It's good. It's getting there. Question while we're reading?
Yeah, I mean, first of all, great job getting this here, so we're at that point where we can vote on this. It's a very thorough package and it looks like it's well thought through and I really appreciate that, so thank you. The one question I have is having to do with, it talks about bond component and then term one and term two. I don't want to get into that now, because it's very technical, but if I wanted to learn more about that, is there, can you point me to something that I could read up on that kind of stuff? I would have to ask our financial advisors perhaps provide some educational materials around it. So I'd appreciate that.
Yeah.
Is that it?
Yeah, that's it, yeah. So I just wanted that displayed and then we could add that into the meeting materials. And then when I make the motion, I would just refer to that as presented, that I can certify it. I get, I don't know.
Sean, repression?
Yeah, it's a stupid question, but in the letter you, at the start of this, you listed average interest rate at 4.013. And then in the table of the actual motion, the numbers seem bigger than 4.4.
Correct. So because the, because the bond sale was for 75 million, it actually sold at 73.395 and the rest is a premium that is not repaid. So the actual size of what is needing to be paid as the quote unquote principal is less than that 75. So, there's that that's involved and then the rates within the individual bonds that make up the entirety of the bond package, which is why we have so many additional signatures this evening as well, so.
Would, thanks Sean. Would it be accurate to say that the method you pursued to separate the borrowing into multiple rounds, hoping that interest rates would settle and come down, was a good move?
I think it was a good move and credit to the Bond Advisory Group and thank you Mr. Powell again for being on that group and to the rest of the folks that were involved from the towns. And it's also, timing is also part of a conversation we have with our town administrators for what they're hearing about market conditions from the municipal side, which we're not as tied into as a school district necessarily. So that's also very helpful in a partnership. But yeah, I think it was, it was the right move. You know, we are a little higher on our first sale, which luckily that was a smaller portion to do the cash flow for the first approximate year. So, we're, I think we're in good shape though, that our financial advisors feel good about the sale and we'll go from there. And to, I just want to follow up on Mr. Simon's point, is that the math only average interest rate is done by the financial advisors, that's not by me, so.
Ross, one last question. This is not the last bond we will take out?
It is not. So, without getting into too much detail, the last bond timing amount relative to the end of the project, it takes a little bit more finessing, I think, and it might need more discussion, just depending upon where we're at with, with timing and things like that. So, we've already had conversations, when we were at the joint conference with Joe back in November, I talked to a couple of the school districts about how they bonded their projects. Again, just continuing to spread our net on, on strategy and understanding, so, yeah. It may or may not be just one more. There may be some short-term note stuff there that's complicated by how the project trails off until you're finally closed and done with the MSBA and.
But the, the last of it will be taken out in the next, in the construction period.
Correct, it has to be done during the construction period.
And so I just want everybody to be aware that whatever hits their tax bills in January is not the last increase.
Correct. And I would also direct them to their town officials to understand their tax bills. I don't want to make assumptions there either.
Because all the towns will do it differently.
Correct, we do have more bonding to do, to make up our share of the project, you know, as stipulated by the project funding agreement with MSBA.
Okay. Any other questions?
Just one last question, so, it's been 16 months, I think, since we issued the first bond? Approximately, when do you expect the third charge to end? So, approximately a year? And I'm going to say approximately, knowing that there's news about tariffs, further inflation, we're going into our steel suit, our, not escalation of construction, but the way our, our cash flow is modeled out, is that we are starting to get, we're going to start getting significant bills monthly, because the ramping up of construction of the high school, more material, more construction, more progress month by month. So, it's approximately a year, and I say approximately because of the way our final GMP may come in, because of other those, other those factors. It may be a little bit less, it may be a little bit more. I think our conversations with town administrators about when these, these things come in relative to their tax assessments and when new bills go out and things like that is, is part of the important conversation at that time. Thank you.
All right, everybody. Thanks Ross for all of that.
Oh, thank you.
Really appreciate it. Let's move the agenda now to the.
Vote.
Oh dang, I got excited, sorry. All right, so, we have the procedural motion out of the way, but now we're going to move to the actual motion. Joe, would you like to make it or what?
Yeah, I'll make the motion. I move that the district re-approve the issuance of notes and bonds as presented in the proposed motion by Bond Council and as included in the meeting materials.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks Scott. Any further discussion?
Does it matter that the exact language doesn't match what's in the meeting materials of this motion? Just asking.
If I were to be asked, the only other piece that I would potentially add into the motion is February 2025 sale, so it's specific to this sale.
The language that, as long as Scott's amenable to it, you can alter the motion, Joe.
What's, I'm sorry, what was the?
The initial language on the motion was adopt the vote prepared by Bond Council in connection with the sale and approval of the district's February 2025 bond issue.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Adding the date, I think, is significant.
I'm sorry?
I think adding the date may be significant. I don't want to assume it's not, and I don't think adding it may materially change anything.
I apologize, I didn't, yeah, I didn't see that yet. So, yeah, we can add in the February 2025 bond issue.
Okay, and Scott's okay with that?
I'm okay with it.
Thank you guys. Okay, so any further discussions? All those in paper. There it is. Any opposed? All right, Ray, thank you and.
Thank you, everyone.
All right, now if you move on, I think, to the next item, and that is the next budget update, update number two.
Madam Chair, yes, here we are for our second budget update and multiple portions of our annual workshop process that often we get to a vote that we bring to our towns. I'm coming to you tonight humbled by the experiences we've had the last couple of weeks. As we presented our budget to you on January 29th, we knew that we had some significant work to do in identifying the sectors of our organization that we needed to reduce in order to get to a budget number that is a digestible number for our towns in order to pass at town meetings. So, we had a challenge in front of us like the Nushoba Regional School District has never had before, for all the reasons we explained in the previous two budget meetings. So, some of the things that we're going to present to you tonight, these are difficult things, but they are the truth in the situation that we have to address. Just know that in this process, we've been collaborating with town officials, Mr. Mulcain and I have. We had a meeting with the Bolton Advisory Chair just yesterday morning. And we've been working with the leadership of our associations, both Unit A and Unit C, as well as the association leadership team. We will have another meeting with them tomorrow afternoon as we problem solve our way around the challenges we have in front of us. So, I think the most, the most challenging part of this was this particular week, our leaders, including myself, have spoke with key employees where these reductions are most likely to impact them. But I will remind the committee that we are in a process. So, as always, these are subject to change as we grow, develop and understand other elements in the process. And so, it's in that spirit that we present this to you tonight, and so the recommendations that we have in front of you are the recommendations that we have today on February 12th. And based upon our interactions and conversations that we have regarding our budget and what we need to execute a high quality educational program is, is subject to updating. So, I share that with you as we dive into this. And it's, at this point, I'd like to turn once again to our Finance and Operations Director, who, Mr. Mulcain and I have gotten to know each other really, really well these past two weeks. And I think both of our significant others recognize we spend more time with each other than we do with them. But it's all for good cause and it's, it's in the interest of what we do for our students. So, Mr. Mulcain, can you take us through the open of the presentation, please?
Absolutely. Thank you for the opportunity. And I do want to reiterate Superintendent Downing's sentiment that, you know, you know, as a former teacher and school principal, it's not lost on me as your Finance and Operations Director that there's impact. And we are walking a line of understanding the impact in conjunction with our Assistant Superintendent and all those involved. So, I just felt obligated to reiterate and speak to that. So our objectives this evening are to do a quick revisit of the budget update from the last school committee meeting on the 29th of January, and then spend the majority of our time updating the committee and the public on our current budget conditions. our time updating the committee and the public on our current budget conditions. So as always, at the beginning of our presentation on the budget, we talk about sort of the, here we are on February 12th. Just a quick note that Mr. Powell reminded me of that we are not meeting tomorrow for a couple of different reasons for the budget warrant subcommittee, but we're attempting to meet shortly right after the February break prior to the next update to the school committee. We do have the FinCom meeting coming up with, the joint FinCom meeting with the Lancaster and Stowe FinCom and the Bolton Advisory, and then again, the remainder of the budget season ahead. So as we finished our meeting two weeks ago, we left our work at a proposed budget of just under $70 million, $69.9 million, with a 5.15% increase in our operating budget over FY '25. And you can see the impact to the town assessments at that point. You recall that we got there by proposing the 18 unspecified reductions in our, our district, as well as what we believe would be our potential insurance reduction if those staff members in those positions were not within the district. Obviously, we will have the same counts in our insurance, and that was what we believed at the time would be a good faith estimate on what the impact to the insurance would be. So that total target reduction of the, of the work ahead between two weeks ago and tonight was approximately $1.9 million. We ended our last meeting also with discussing what the unresolved factors were ahead for the last 14 days. A major piece of that was obviously our insurance and benefits rates. We did receive those, just in line with our, our mid-February target. Our excess and deficiency balance has been certified, and obviously Assistant Superintendent Friend has provided some information on the PRISM grant. I want to stress, and I will stress it again a little bit, at this point, we can only estimate and predict non-salary support. We don't know the level of potential support for personnel within that grant. And also, to the timeline that the Assistant Superintendent spoke of, it does not really factor majorly into the budget as a personnel look at this point. So our excess and deficiency balance certification came back from the Department of Revenue at $2,476,526. I do want to thank the Roselli and Clark auditing firm, which really helped us this year, do some adjustments and cleaning of how it was presented in a number of previous years. So that all felt really good, based on the fact that this is essentially only a $30,000 increase on our excess and deficiency balance. It does put us in a place where we are continuing, as the administration, to recommend a appropriation of $1.4 million. We have not changed our, our proposed appropriation in either direction. We have left it where it is at this point. So at that point, I'm just going to pause on the excess and deficiency, if it's okay, and take in any questions about the certification.
Any questions on E and D?
So I'm going to speak to the non-salary reductions and offsets. We did this at the last meeting. We always look to our non-salary and see what we might be able to do for offsets. And I appreciate the school committee's patience over the next 60, 60 seconds or so, as I explained, the, the first two. So based on what we understand about the PRISM grant right now, today, and what we predict about the non-salary impact, we think there's about $125,000 that may come in to help our non-salary support assessment, curriculum, materials, supplies, those types of things. We had already applied $100,000 offset from the extended learning balance to our assessment protocol system. So with the PRISM grant taking that over, leaving that $100,000 in there did not make any sense, because now the PRISM grant is taking care of that and then some. So that offset from extended learning has now been moved to the Technology Department to reduce the impact of the Chromebook purchases for students within the hardware line. So the real impact on the entire budget is that $22,000 essentially for the teaching and learning budget. Then the offset to technology, Mr. Frieswick sat and he went through all of his priorities relative to scheduled maintenance. You know, credit to Mr. Frieswick, he wanted to really push the envelope on some things, and I had to temper it and say, if we don't address this under scheduled maintenance, we have to remember that there could be a problem down the road capital-wise. Let's leave some things in and not, not overcommit to reductions. But again, I think, again, it's a $60,000 approximately reduction to the Facilities Department. Athletics, we did look at where our athletic revolving is right now, just like we did last year at this time. Last year, I believe we put a $30,000 offset to the transportation. We've increased it to $45,000 based on where things are at and how that offset's looking this year and how we can predict it out. So essentially, the operating budget therefore then gets reduced by approximately $226,000 at this point. So I'll turn it back over to the Superintendent unless there's any questions relative to non-salary.
Yeah, let's ask the non-salary questions. Go ahead.
So it looks like you're using the PRISM grant as a partial offset to some of our budget challenges?
Correct.
Is that permitted by the grant?
So what's permitted by the grant relative to early literacy, we believe, looking at it, that it would be approximately $125,000 that we could use to commit to the grant. It's not an offset, but it continues to support the early literacy work and the work that's being done through the Department of Teaching and Learning within the buildings. So yes, what happens with the PRISM grant from our understanding is that it's a faded approach, almost like the innovation pathways, so that there will be, so for FY '26, there's the set amount, FY '27, that will come down a little bit, and then FY '28, it comes down a little bit more. So it's a multi-year commitment from, from PRISM essentially, and we believe it can pay for some of the work that we're being done, that's being done, and then expanding some of the work also that Teaching and Learning is doing.
But we're going to have to find the money somewhere else next year?
Not to the same extent, because if the PRISM grant does fade, we don't know the exact calculation on it, but that's an excellent point. You know, it's the ever cautious thought about not using one-time funds to pay for ongoing costs. So at, at this point, we feel comfortable with where we are, but you're absolutely correct that it will have to be looked at year to year.
Okay.
Mr. Mulcain just made the point I was going to make. I'll just amplify that by saying we have to take some calculated risks. That's just the fact of where we are. We are going to have to take calculated risks and we're going to have to make sacrifices. There is no methodology around that. So we're trying to be very measured and thoughtful about our approach as we go through this.
Would it be accurate to say too, I think that we're, some of us are wondering why certain things are being prioritized, but just as a reminder, the early literacy piece is based upon evidence that is showing us that our K-3 kids are struggling with literacy right now, and that this is something that if we don't manage it now and like build that capacity up, we're going to have some major long-term problems.
I, I want to emphasize, the grant is not pointed out there because our students are struggling with literacy.
But we're having to do a whole overhaul right now.
This is, the, the support of the grant is there is because we have demonstrated to DESI that we are a system committed to early literacy instruction, and we have spent the last three years building an infrastructure that is ready to receive their support. So it's not because of performance of our students that we receive that grant. That would be a misstatement. It's because we are primed and ready to be a model school district for the rest of Massachusetts as they look to expand this program, and it's because of the work and the investment that we put into our literacy model these past three years that made us attractive to that grant award.
And that, how many schools, 15?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? Joe, did you?
No.
On the non-salary? Okay, so let's move on.
Okay, so let's talk about personnel reductions, and we're going to go through this. The approach that we took here is these first few slides are that metaphor of sort of tearing off the band-aid. And then we will go through the schools, and I'll be able to show you what the impact in our schools, what the impact is in our schools as we move through. So on the first slide, you're going to see, it has the new requests that were presented in the original budget on January 15th as being pulled back out of the budget. I will go over those because those are not positions that we currently employ in our school district. However, the administrative reductions that we made soon after that are current employees, our curriculum director, and the 0% increase from administrators, which is equivalent to another employee.
And just to be clear, the 0% increase for administrators isn't talking about individuals, it's talking about those people committing to taking no salary increase.
Correct. It is the administrative, the leadership team committing to taking a 0% no salary increase with the caveat that they will have the numerical increase relative to increase in insurance costs. We don't want them, because there's increased insurance costs, they have to take a salary cut, they will get just the increase to cover whatever the increase in benefits are. Moving next. So the approach we're taking here is starting outside the classroom and working our way back. And so when we begin, we look at our stipends for extracurricular activities. In the budget, there are $277,000 in curricular stipends budgeted for this year. We would cap that at 225, and we would work with our principals and together with our association to develop the methodology on how we would make decisions about those activities that are there. I don't want to talk over this too fast, because this is not a small one. These are extracurricular activities that our student participate in outside of the school day. But what we are obligated to pay for first are our mandates, and activities outside of that school day are not mandates. Those are the activities we provide because they're good for our kids, and the things we want them to grow in and have arenas for them to grow and have those connected adults. But they're not mandates like other things, and I just want to be clear about that. We're committed to extracurriculars, but from a budgetary standpoint, we're reducing $52,000 in our extracurricular stipend budget in order to protect staffing in the classroom. So moving on, we're looking at Unit A. This time, I'd like to invite Mr. Manch to the table. In our Unit A, we're going to reduce an evaluation team chair, and then also reduce two occupational therapy assistants. That reduction is coupled with the addition of an occupational therapist. The therapist assistants work with students and can work through the methods they need, but the OT actually is a person that can work with, develop IP, participate in those processes. And I ask Mr. Manch to speak to these two reductions.
Thank you. So I know that it can be challenging when we talk about student services with the requirements that are obligated around the IP process in servicing students. But I really want you to look at these two positions more as a reorganization. We will be looking to engage the department chair at the high school level to be more of a party in the team process at the high school level, and there'll be a reorganization of the highly qualified current sitting team chairs, so that every team meeting in this district will continue to run with the staff that are trained for that process. And, and also, along with my three department administrative assistants who are very in tune with the work that needs to happen. We don't see that there, with this reorganization, that any team meeting will be left unchaired or not addressed. And then, as Superintendent Downing said, the two CODA positions right now, so a CODA is a certified occupational therapy assistant, they can only provide direct service, they can't do any testing, and they shouldn't really be presenting at team meetings. So this is really a reorganization to support the department in doing additional testing that keeps coming up at this time.
I'll just remind the committee that these employees that are listed in Unit A, while they need, they participate in school-level assignments, they are district-level employees, and they work under the direction of Mr. Manch. So that's why we think of, of that group of employees as a team, as we often deploy them to other locations in the district to provide team meeting leadership. So I thank Mr. Manch for looking at some creative ways about how we can still meet those, all the requirements within the team meeting process and what we need to do and address the needs of our students and families. So moving on, in our Facilities Department, we examined our models, and we can see we can reduce the Facilities Department by two custodians by implementing a team model along with an assignment model that currently have. And so Mr. Frieswick will be working with his team on what that model will look like for the future. So next slide.
Can we take pause on the district level? Do I have to ask questions?
Yeah. Oh, without question. I got quick.
So Jackie.
So I'm trying to wrap my brain around this and how it will look in real time. The extracurricular stipends was interesting to me because there was the initial budget that was presented, and we have three middle schools. So my question is, their request for stipends is substantially different?
Yep.
So then, first, based on this reduction, would there be a redistribution of those stipends or a combination of programming? I just want to understand, I think, a little bit better about where those reductions are going to come from and how, like how, if, I know that this is urgent.
Yeah. We're going to use this as an opportunity for us to kind of look at what the core values of our school environments are and how we support those, but also build some alignment across our schools in terms of types of activities that we're offering across the schools. So I think one of those activities that we know is vibrant in all three environments is the drama program, for instance. So we're going to continue to work on that and look, look at those offerings at our, across our schools, because we want to make sure, we're not going to do everybody takes a percentage cut. It's going to be, how do we balance the offerings at our locations to give students opportunities? We also are planning to do some survey work with that to find out what student interest is, to, to understand the activities that are the most desirable for our students to afford with.
Question?
It's along the same lines, like I was just trying to understand if, I'm looking at the stipend schedule in the contract right now, because I was wondering if that $52,000 includes intramural sports or if it's just extracurricular activities and...
All of it.
Including sports?
All of it. So that's, go ahead, Mr. Mulcain.
No, I don't, I don't, not trying to step on anybody's words. So the totality of the intramurals that are offered through the Athletic Department is about $28,000. So it's not, at this point, it's not inclusive of that. This is just the extracurriculars that lie within the buildings, specifically not within the Athletic Department, so.
These are non-athletic?
These are non-athletic, because the only athletic ones would be the intramural-type ones.
Unless in the athletic budget.
Unless it's something like the weightlifting club, right, which does fall under the building. So again, to Superintendent Downing's point, I think it's a time to level set, you know, as we look at it, so.
Simone?
Yeah, I, I think, I think there will be a lot of questions around where that comes from, but...
Because we, when you cap the budget, it's then up to the principals to decide, and it will be a very clear process for everyone that which stipends will be or which extracurriculars will get to run, maybe it'll be a rotating basis this year, that year.
And just like, and just like their, their supply line, right? That's theirs to do their work. I think what we're hearing though is that there needs to be some sort of level setting as part of the process. Not trying to put definition to that tonight, but it sounded... Not trying to put definition to that tonight, but it sounds to ensure that there's some of that. You know, to the point about the middle schools, you know, are the same, are the same offerings being offered? It brings out that discussion. Could there be shared offerings? Brings out that discussion, so.
Okay, yeah.
Is there any possibility to have fees for extracurricular stuff to bridge the gap or?
So we currently have those fees. They do not yield the number that we were hoping for. A lot of our clubs are non-fee based because they are service, human-oriented type of clubs that are aligned to our strategic work, but also are there to support students. And we're not going to, students need to be supported, we're not going to charge them. So we're, all those questions are on the table. And we're going to be working closely with our, our team to make those decisions. But we know ultimately in the end that the authority of running clubs lies with the principal of each school based upon the budget they're allotted to, to fund the clubs with. But we will be looking at equity for funding across our schools to, to ensure that we're being funded.
Go ahead, Sharon. I saw Sharon's hand, but go ahead, Jackie.
So to the Unit A, just two follow-up questions. So currently the two CO, TAs, the occupational therapy assistants are doing direct service. With the reduction in those pieces, the OT addition would be responsible for the increasing amounts of evaluations as well as the 2.0 FTEs of direct service?
Now, we have additional occupational therapists in the district, so that would be shared across that. Not specifically to one.
So my question was, is also around that Unit A. It's a two-person reduction, but in a one-person addition. Yes?
It looks like they're going to reallocate responsibility across multiple.
You have to understand that a lot of the occupational therapies time is caught up in evaluating and testing. So when you bring in another occupational therapist, that testing can then be divvied out and then the occupational therapist's time can be freed up to do more direct service time.
I guess I'm just, I'm having a hard time. It's confusing to me because it's, it's not really a reduction of two staff. It's a reduction of one. So I'm wondering why it's presented as a reduction of two with an addition of one. Is it just because of the trading? Is that why you were saying it's a reorganization?
It's simply to help you track it in the budget. We're reducing two CODAs, but we just want to provide you with the reassurance of what those students are getting. They're going to have their needs met because we're adding the occupational therapist and sharing the workload across the team. So that's just a mechanism to help you track it, these two reductions.
Well, there would be some financial impact there too because the qualifications are different.
Yeah.
So you can see the net is, and the net is going to be about our placeholder for a full-time position, which is around the 81,000 mark.
I have another, oh, question. So the, the Unit A evaluation team chair that would be reduced would then require like reallocation of the high school person that oversee additional programming or is it?
Yes, it would be a reorganization within the team chair department.
And we'd be working additionally with our high school department head to chair those meetings as well. So currently our high school department head is not chairing meetings. In the future, the high school department head will be a part of that team that will be chairing meetings.
Okay, everybody, let's move on to the, thanks Sharon. Let's move on to the school level staffing reduction.
Alright, so when we look at Year Day employees, the first item is mentioned here, 3.0 middle school-related parts, teachers. This is an impact due to looking at our eighth grade enrollment and recognizing the class sizes at eighth grade and making a shift of Spanish from solely eighth grade in a five-day-a-week model. It would shift Spanish to grades six, seven, and eight in a two-day-a-week model. The total number of days over those three years would be a minimum of 216 days. Is currently, we have 180 days. And as, as we heard tonight, the trade-off of that is five days a week versus two, up to three days a week, potentially in more grades in a longer time span. So the displacement of that model would mean that the current related arts offerings that we have in our middle schools would be impacted, but they will not be removed. We will look at a model where we look at the time that is dedicated to those curriculum areas because it's very important that our students have a variety of experiences in the middle school model related to, to their related arts offerings. I'm going to ask Assistant Superintendent to add some color to this. Being a longtime middle school principal, she can inform the committee.
And middle school teacher.
And middle school teacher, yeah.
Right, I mean, the develop, all of this is hard. It's just the reality. And so we're working to make the best decisions that we can to still maintain a really quality program for our students and it's hard. It's yes and no. The developmental phase of our adolescents in middle school is all about exploration and discovery and exposure. So our intention as we explore the next iteration of our middle school model, we'll maintain that at the forefront is wanting to make sure that our students are still exposed to and have opportunity to explore the related arts offerings that we currently have. The time is going to be impacted because of the reduction, but we still believe all of the content areas as it exists in our related arts program are important for our students. So we're working with our principals and our leadership team in exploring options for the best way to optimize time to still meet the goals we have around exposure and discovery for our adolescents. And that's where we're at at this base in time.
Thank you. So moving on, we would look to our high school where we reduce a total of 3.4 teachers at the high school. I'll talk in more depth about that when we get to that slide. We also, our guidance team also functions in a way that is supportive of the district. Why do we often have to shift these employees based upon demand and need? But we'll be reducing one of those positions. MRE third grade is an area as well as the NRSD math coaches. We currently have three full-time math coaches that work with students K to eight. We would be shifting to a model where we would still keep those three employees, but they'd be reduced to a .6 contract working with grades three to five. Looking at our Unit C employees at the school level, you can see there would be a reduction to the regional high school secretary position as well as our three middle school library assistants. And so let's begin walking through the schools and we can kind of show what the impact of this is.
Last is done.
Did I miss one else? So as we look at Mary Rollinson, I've given you this time, these are the actual enrollment numbers in our schools as of Monday this week. So when you look at the actual enrollment, you can see that third grade at Mary Rollinson would show 68 students across three sections. And with a section of third grade there, we would reduce that section. You would also notice that at first grade, currently there's 63, which would represent three sections by our class size standards. Our annual growth estimates from kindergarten first are larger than any other grade in the system as you might naturally expect. And so we're holding that fourth section at MRE as a placeholder today and included in our budget. And by doing that, that section is on watch. If throughout the spring and into the end of the year, we see that that number doesn't actualize to cross our 22 per classroom threshold, that position would then be redeployed either within Mary Rollinson. As you can see, fifth grade would be a location for redeployment of that position potentially. Or it can be deployed to another location in the district that might be having a run on their class size numbers. Included, this is just the updated flow charts. But I, I would like you to see and the community to see that when we look in this, our administration in our elementary schools is two people. And those two people have the responsibility of the safety and care of all the employees and, and students in those buildings. And so you can see the breakdown of, of our FTEs result. Moving into Luther Burbank, we discussed, excuse me, I'm probably going to pause a few dots.
Take your time, that's okay.
As I get a dry throat here. Thank you. You can see this expresses what I was discussing for about earlier about the reduction in eighth grade. At Luther Burbank, that would bring class sizes to 20 and 21, which is right within a very healthy range of our 24 to 1 ratio. So those class sizes are very reasonable class sizes for eighth grade students. And those sizes are actually lower than many of our elementary classrooms in grades K through five. Moving to the next, we can pass through, you can see that's the expression. Oh, I do want to pause here on this slide for Luther Burbank Middle School. I think it's important to note for our community that in this model, as it's expressed on this slide, there is one administrator in the school and that is the principal. There are no other administrators at Luther Burbank Middle School. You can see the dean is on here, but we will be talking about reductions in the dean element towards the end of the presentation. As we're trying to tell you the story of how we came to that conclusion. So shifting over to Florence Sawyer. These are the common methodologies, so I don't need to go into as much depth as I did on the first two pages. You would see the eighth grade reduction similar to Luther Burbank School. You already knew about the need at first grade and fifth grade from a previous meeting and the reduction at second grade from a previous meeting. You'll notice that the K box is in yellow and shows a zero. That's to show you the same methodology we looked at Mary Rollinson for first grade. Currently, we are tracking at 63 students. I do know in that number, there are a couple of maybes. And Kristen Ryan, our director of early childhood, has done an incredible job of working with our building administrative assistants to do the kindergarten roundup. And these numbers are solid in terms of what we have today. Doesn't mean they will change. We do experience sort of a trickle effect, if you will, that could potentially happen. So it's important to keep that fourth position of K right now, but that is another position that is potentially a position that could be redeployed once our kindergarten numbers actualize. You'll also see here the reduction in the library assistant as mentioned previously. And the flow chart here at Florence Sawyer School, I want to bring your attention to the administrative box as well here. You'll see there are three administrators at Florence Sawyer School. That is for anyone in our community that doesn't know Florence Sawyer School is a K to eight school. And so as a K to eight school, they are balanced with the other two towns in terms of the number of administrators, K to eight. But in this model, there is one principal and two assistant principals. And then you can see the breakdown of our educators in the other units. Moving on to Center School. You can see looking at our numbers at Center School that grade three continues to sit right on the limit of 24 per classroom as does the three fifth grade sections at Center School. This is an interesting phenomenon that is really new for us at Center School. We've done a thorough gathering of the students in Stoke to date. This is the smallest K number we've had at this point since Ivan. And so like the other two areas, that fourth kindergarten position will continue to be held in abeyance with an opportunity for redeployment depending on how those kindergarten class sizes actualize. I think it's also important to recognize that our kindergarten classrooms are also staffed with a full-time instructional assistant. And that instructional assistant, if that does not materialize, would also be redeployed to support. Center School's structure is identical to Center School, MRE's school structure, so there's nothing new to share there.
Can I ask a clarifying question? Uh, sure. They have, there's more, there's an administrative assistant and a secretary, but that's not in the other chief school?
We'll be coming to that. We'll be coming to that. Yes, they are, they are at this point.
Can you clarify just for anyone who's following along at home? That there were mention of certain numbers of guidance counselors, but that at LBMS there was only one, but where that other person may be allocated to?
Yeah. And that structure in terms of where the person will be allocated to is not determined. That is going to be based on it. But the way we staff our buildings for guidance counselors is based upon the National Organization recommendation of one guidance counselor per 250 students. So we also know that our guidance counselors do some work for students that are on IEPs. And then we also have school adjustment counselor responsibilities and also social worker responsibilities. We're looking at all those employees, looking at the demand and the requirements as mandated in IEPs to address those needs to develop that redeployment model.
Those people are not on the school level spreadsheets, those are on the district level?
The, the guidance counselors are on the district level, are on the school level spreadsheets. However, we manage them thinking in a district-wide approach based on that 250 to 1 model and what the needs are based upon how there are some matches with IEPs. So there are some employees that function as part guidance, part social worker or part guidance, part school adjustment. And so we have some reorganization to do around all those sectors to come up with our next strategy. I don't know if Mr. Manch wanted to speak to this element as well or if I explained it.
And just for everybody's, if you see here, we're going to hold questions until the end so that we can get, let Kirk get through the presentation and then we can effer away. So just hang tight, guys, write them down if you're afraid you're going to forget.
So with Hale Middle School, you can see it replicates Luther Burbank as well. You would see that with four sections, we would still be maintaining remarkably small class sizes at Hale of 15 and 16 students per classroom as that is a small sector of students that are moving through the school district. Excuse me, you would see in the following year, there would be 92 students coming. So a difference of 29 students, of course. Hale, similar to Luther Burbank, has one administrator in that building. And moving into the high school where frankly, it's just a little more complicated. It's a little more complicated because it's based on course selection. So you're, you're not cohorts of students that are in sections of classes. It's mixed and matched in all sorts of different courses. And so in looking at the analysis of the class size report, the class size reports and working with Dr. Boyton, we're looking at a reduction of 3.4 in Unit A FTE across the departments listed here. Physical education, social studies, math, world language, we already have... We already have reduced in the science department. There are some methodologies we might be able to recognize there as well. I think what's important to note is that we will be able to make these reductions and maintain the 24 class size limit at the high school. We will not be exceeding the 24 per class section, unless of course, there's a variance given for a course, depending on the content of that course. But when you think of, say, your, say, standard geometry course, we would be able to maintain that level. And so, looking at that, I think it's important to note in terms of world language, and as we look at our class sizes, we do recognize that offering three languages at the high school does sort of dissipate it. It disperses your students across those languages, and then you think about the sustainability of those languages through the years, as we have a two-year language requirement, but we offer languages up to year four and including AP. And this is where we're seeing some low class sizes in that program. We are forecasted to be reducing in our high school in the next three to four years of an additional 50 to 60 students. So the reductions that we're going to be seeing in enrollment at the high school will continue to be a challenge in terms of how we staff the building. And so, we got to start looking forward with what are the sacrifices that we have to make to maintain our fiscal responsibilities and educational programming. I want to keep it all. I want to be clear with the committee, clear with our community, clear with our teachers. I want to keep it all. This is not my recommendation for what I think is the best educational program for our students. I'm bringing forward to you the stark reality of what we're faced with in a budgetary crisis. And we have to make hard decisions. Sometimes, we have to make brutal decisions to get through these moments, because the alternative is just not palatable. And I'll speak to that at this moment. We have to manage and build a budget in a way that is going to be palatable for our towns, so that they pass at their town meeting. If any budget number you vote on March 12th is changed at town meeting, it voids the budget, and we're forced into a 1/12 scenario. Or if two of our three towns were to vote down our budget, we go to a 1/12 scenario, and I'll describe to you what that looks like. A 1/12 scenario looks like a $66 million budget that we currently are in for FY '25, and it's segmented into twelfths. You get that funding essentially one month at a time to carry you through a period of time while your towns are able to come to an agreement on a new fiscal budget. If we are forced into a 1/12 budget scenario because our budget fails, that means we will be laying off an additional 40 teachers, letting them go...
Beyond this.
Beyond this. An additional 40 teachers across the school system beyond this. And I say that as an equivalency. We would have to look at all of our buckets, but I'm just trying to give you what an equivalency is, based upon the $81,000 metric. And we would have to lay off an additional 40 employees if this budget fails. Wait for summertime town meetings to happen, to bring that together. Then, once we have that, we can begin hire backs. But once you reduce those employees, what do you think they're going to go do? Find jobs. So then, you're forced into a situation where you're reinforcing your staff at the levels that were then eventually met in a, in a new budget, but you're doing it at a time of year where the best teachers and the best employees out there are hired up by other school systems. I have to tell you, in my career, I have actually benefited greatly from towns that were in those scenarios, because I was able to scoop them up in the districts where I was working. And we don't want to be pushing ourselves into a scenario where that is a risk. So when I present these reductions here to you, I'm not presenting this because I want to do this. It's the exact opposite. I want to avoid all of it. You saw the original budget analysis. What we want includes all those things at the very first presentation, to bring more educational opportunity to our school system. But we are faced with the dark reality that we have to make what are coming as very draconian cuts to our system in order to keep the doors open and running for our students. And that is going to put on pause important strategic work. It's going to put a shift to the work that our administrators have to do, and this is going to be a challenge. Now, what I've shared with you up to this point is all the information that we had. You'll see the high school flow chart after that. But what you'll see here is the budget summary based upon what we shared with you tonight up to yesterday afternoon, and I'll ask Mr. Mulcaren to summarize.
Yeah. So I presented the non-salary reductions and offsets. Our insurance placeholder on, you know, the potential unspecified positions that we talked about, now that they're specific, it's more around the level of $217,000, and then the staffing reductions of 1.4 million. So the total is $1,906,825. Our target number at the end of the last meeting, to get the budget to that 5.15% operating increase, was $1,903,960. So we're within that target by about $3,000. So to Superintendent Downey's point, this is not what we want to do, but being tasked to do it, this is what we put together.
So this takes us to a point, I want to get to the next level, so you can see the continuity of that.
Do you have any other questions about the staffing?
I just...
Not yet. We'll do that all in a package. Yeah.
Just the next slide, I just want to point out. So, we're essentially where we were targeted to be, based on the proposal, the unspecified positions, the insurance placeholder, and obviously, we've made some other moves with offsets and reductions. But we're essentially right where we targeted to be at the end of the last, last meeting.
So, that took us up to about 3 o'clock yesterday. And so, Mr. Mulcaren, along with our Huguenot and Resource Department, met with our insurance group, with Maya, and we received some very difficult news, in that we have been holding a 12% placeholder in our budget for health insurance increases. And our increase is coming in at 19.92%, which means in the last 24 hours, we've had to address, how are we going to continue to address now a budget, in order to hit those targets, a budget gap of another $528,000. And I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Mulcaren to speak about some of that detail.
So if you remember back at the budget workshop, when we talked about this 12% budget assumption, it was the highest, at least in my time, that I set it. And I set it at 12%, knowing that over the last several years, we've gotten the range for the insurance trust, 12% has been on the high end. Knowing market conditions and some information that we, you know, we're not going to have the same sort of almost level of insurance, because we made the deductible addition last year, I modeled it at 12%. We came in at the high end of the range. If you remember from last meeting, the range that was produced by Maya was the 9.92 to 19.92. So a couple of things that we want to point out, and anybody with health insurance, the health insurance market is impacted by rising healthcare costs and rising prescription usage. Those are just the facts. The other piece that we have to understand is that, within the Maya Trust, you have a target of using 88% of your premiums paid for health insurance cost. So for, the way to think about it is, if our total premiums paid between our employee 30% and the district 70% was 10 million, Maya's target would be for us to use about 8.8 million in that in costs. We were at 97% based on our premiums paid over the last approximately calendar year. So, this was obviously very difficult news to hear, but it is the way that the methodology and being part of the trust works. Another thing that I would point out, of the 35 accounts that our representative has, 10 were at the top of the range, 5 are brand new, which means they fall right in the middle. That's just the contract with the trust, and the rest were sort of smattering all over. I am not hearing from a significant amount of my colleagues in the area that less than 10% is really what's happening right now. So, again, to Superintendent Downey's point, we assumed 12. We were thinking, okay, what happens at 15%? And yesterday was a significant situation. There's nothing we can do at this point tonight to change the number that we were presented just 24 hours ago. So we've had 24 hours to process and understand and problem solve, and this is where we are today.
So, as we look further at that?
I just...
Mr. Mulcaren?
So therefore, increasing the operating budget by that just over $500,000 would increase the operating budget to almost 6% over last year, and obviously increases our town share as well, based on, from the previous where we set that operating at 5.15%. This obviously has impact for them.
So to get back to our target increases that we've been discussing and working with the town officials on, we would have to look at some additional reductions. And this is where we would look at the reduction of the .5 secretary position at Center School that was noted on the Center School flow chart, as well as all four of our deans at the three middle schools and the high school. Mr. Mulcaren?
Yep. So, you know, talked a little bit about calculated risk tonight. So as part of our revenue lines, we have investment income, which has been very good to the school districts in recent years. So in FY '25, we noted and put in an estimate of $200,000 in revenue from our investment income. This is not investment income relative to the building project, which I know sometimes comes up. This is strictly what we hold in the Massachusetts Municipal Depository Trust, which is when we get in our assessments from the town or other revenue, if it's there before we use it for expenses, it can gain interest, and that's paying very strongly right now. So, it's a calculated risk. Right now, of the $200,000 that we built in as an estimate for FY '25, we've exceeded that as of today. So we've gone beyond that by about 20,000. So we've already met our threshold for this year. We feel comfortable with putting it forward for 300,000 next year. It's a calculated risk. We have to watch all of our expenses and all of our revenues throughout the school year. However, what this does is, we will reduce the budget by that 432,000. That's not the full impact of the health insurance cost. By adding an additional revenue, we don't reduce our budget by the full 500,000, but what happens is there's a net impact to the assessments for our member towns that you can see here. So while the total operating budget is higher than that proposal that gets us to 5.15%, our member town increases for the operating budget, so Bolton, for example, at 5.24. The previous one had them at 5.25. Lancaster was at 7.48, they're now at 7.47, and so it was just about the same, by the way that's where the, you know, the placeholder falls. So, we didn't reduce the operating budget by that full impact of the health insurance. We reduced it partially most of the way, and the other way to make that up and produce a budget to the towns and assessments to the towns that falls in the window that they're comfortable with, as we know today, is to increase that leverage of the investment income revenue.
So, in looking at what that means in terms of our employees, I want you all to take a look at this graph, that in my first year as your superintendent, the budget that I assumed coming in, we have 510 total FTE employees. There may be some part-time employees combined. That the budget proposal we're showing you today is 463.69. So you can see over the course of these four years, we will be reducing our total employees in the school district nearly 10%. We have only reduced in enrollment 3%. And so, I shared that with you to combat a narrative that enrollments are declining, yet the school systems continue to add positions. That is just blatantly false. We have not been adding positions, as you can see in this graph here. As we have established our class size standards, we established our administrative standards, our counseling standards, we redeployed positions based on those standards to places where we could support students in our equity model, to provide them what they need for their education, and then we also have had some reductions there, as you know, in previous budgets. So I just want the committee to be clear about this, because this is an important talking point for our community to understand, that we don't want to be in this place. And this is not to blame anyone. We do not blame any of our local officials in our town, not certainly blame our taxpayers. We will never blame our educators or administrators. We are stuck in a scenario of structures, of fundamental systems that are coming together at a time for the Neshoga Regional School District that is a perfect storm. And that is the challenge that we have to overcome. Mr. Mulcaren?
So, the increase from FY '25's voted budget to today is approximately 3.5 million. Again, the impact to the towns is within where we believe and understand them, they need to be. But just to give the committee a sort of updated view of what are the significant factors that are contributing to the still remaining increase? We've talked about special education services, insurance and benefits, and we know that we have assigned increases to charter and school choice. So again, significant impact from those really non-negotiable factors for different reasons are moral and ethical obligation around special education, where we landed with our insurance increase, and what we are obligated by master and a lot of payout in school choice and charter school tuitions. So this is, again, this is where we are today, and I think it paints a picture of, you know, what is still driving the increase. You know, to Superintendent Downing's point about what a 0% increase would look like, this is essentially the majority of the delta between a 0% and a 5%, you know, to 5% increase.
So I'm seeing that it's 8:58, and I just need a thumbs up from everybody that you're willing to give us a little bit more time to just ask a couple of questions here on this.
We have two slides.
Yep. So I'm going to do my best to, because of the hour, explain these next two slides in short order, but it's a visual impact. So our health insurance costs over the last several years, again, we're still within our voted budget right now, so, but you can see how the cost has increased in total for active employee health insurance. We've continued to try to apply offsets, but I would just draw your attention to the FY '25 voted to FY '26 proposed. So the stacking of those two bar graphs together there is that, that increase. We've already applied more offsets in the yellow, and you can still see the delta on that blue, operating impact to operating impact. With regards to the special education, I'm looking only here at the special education out of district placement costs and the specialized transportation costs. We have contracted services, we have other things that go into that budget that's non-salary, but this just looks at those two big factors for a couple of different reasons. Number one, we've talked about the circuit breaker reimbursement phenomenon, and we also know that our IDA grant, while it still provides a healthy... also know that our IDA grant, while it still provides a healthy dose of support to the district, it's based on head count of student, and that doesn't necessarily change significantly over time. So we typically put that $700,000 in. So within the graph, you can see in orange, which is a combination of that red circuit breaker revenue that comes in and reimbursement, and the IDEA grant that's really assigned that we can use for transportation. We use it for other things beyond that 700,000, but it's not significant. As the cost of placements and transportation has gone up, you can see the impact. Most notably is the fact that if you look at the difference between circuit breaker reimbursement that we received in FY '22 as compared to FY '24 and now FY '25, well, it goes up a little bit from '24 to '25. Please remember that the transportation piece of this, placements, we get 75% back on those high costs over the threshold. Transportation, we used to get 75% back. Last year it was 58. This year we see 44%. Obviously, there's advocacy at play, but we really truly don't know. We know based on the fact that our costs are going up this year, that we're comfortable with a possible $2 million reimbursement next year, that we're already utilizing all of it in the FY '26 budget. So I'm going to pause there before I talk about next steps. Superintendent Downing?
Yeah, I think we outlined the next steps pretty well in our map, and I think everybody understands those next steps well. So I think we'll just pause at this moment and take any questions from the committee.
Hey, everybody's exhausted, and this is not great and uplifting news. So can you conjure any important questions here that you just need clarified?
First, you know, I appreciate all of the thoughtfulness that went into these recommendations. I know it was a difficult task, and we've got the best interests of the community in mind, given the circumstances. I just wanted to clarify that with the changes that you're proposing at the middle school level, it sounds, I just want to give one, I guess, clarification or confirmation that the current offerings of specials at the middle schools will be preserved. It's just a matter of the amount of time each student will be experiencing those specials. So it's not as if any particular program is being eliminated as a result of these changes.
That's correct.
Okay. Like the, I guess, kind of a follow-up on that, the library, I saw that there's an instructional assistant that's one of the positions that's proposed to be eliminated. Is that the same as, forgive my ignorance here, is that seen as a librarian?
No, librarian is a Unit A position. So we will still be staffed with librarians at Center School, at Mary Robinson Elementary, and at Florence Superior School. However, we will not have librarians at Hill Middle School or Lurth Burbank School.
Okay, but you will maintain the instructional assistants in those libraries?
No, we're reducing the instructional assistants in those libraries.
And so who will be in charge of those libraries?
That's the strategy that we have to develop locally into those buildings.
All right, is that it?
Just one more question about German at the high school. I'm assuming that that decision is based on enrollment numbers within German classes?
Correct.
Could you just give us some more context on how enrollment in the German classes compares to the other world language offerings?
Yeah, I don't have all those class size numbers in front of me now, but what I can tell you is that it starts at a level that ranges, depending on the year, from 15 to 20 students, and by the time they're after that second year, it wanes down to 10 or less students. So there's a little variance from year to year, but it just doesn't have sustainability. What ends up happening is we're not able to execute a model of distribution of students across our class sizes, and so it's inefficient in how we deploy our staffing. So when we look at what our command is in this budget, we have to look for those efficiencies. And that's where those efficiency, that's where those moments of sacrifice come with those efficiencies. Keeping the programs, I want to be bluntly clear with this, we'd want to keep it. We are being posed with a fiscal challenge right now that this option, particularly knowing that we're going to be declining even further in enrollment in our high school due to just basic population decreases, I think is the responsible step to take. We will continue to still be engaged in the conversations, and listen, we're going to, we're going to, we need to get to a budget number on March 12th. We're going to be talking about educational programming up to March 12th and after March 12th in terms of what are the moves that we can make. These are the best options I can present to you today on February 12th.
All right. Amy?
I had a question about that, too. So we have students then at the high school who have always taken German that will suddenly be taking a different foreign language, is that correct?
I'm so glad you asked that question. So let me explain in terms of sunsetting German, they would, we would continue the staffing to allow them to, those who are already in the program, to extend the program to the level that they want to extend it to. Sunsetting would mean that we would not be offering the German one course, anticipating what our enrollment and the demands are going to be in future years. So those students currently taking that course would continue to take the courses in future years.
My other question was, so now in, it's about the healthcare piece. So in upcoming years then, are we now going to be, because I think that's going to continue to be a big budget driver. It's gone up, it's been going up, it went up significantly this year. Are we now going to be budgeting for like a 20%? Is that sort of how we're going to go forward? Like for the next, you know what I'm saying?
It's a great question.
Based on our conversation with our representative yesterday, this is a multi-year impact. To the extent, I don't know. And I say I don't know because I need to understand how this shakes out over the next, essentially 12 months until we start budget planning for FY '27. I certainly would present, if I was asked today, what would my assumption be for health insurance for FY '27? It'd be higher than 12%. How much high, I, how, I don't know. I don't know, and I didn't want to get more input from the rep. You know, we meet with them over the summer to check our utilization. We knew it was high, which is part of the reason I added up to 12%, but just the impact is not necessarily known, so.
One of the things, so as you asked the question about futures planning, one of the things that we're discussing regarding health insurance is that it's, there's a lever that many municipalities and school systems use in that there's an incentive opt-out program. So if you were somebody that currently carries your insurance and they opt out of the insurance, they can receive an additional monetary amount to their salary as long as they remain off of it. And that mechanism has been a useful mechanism to help drive down those costs. We can't use that mechanism right now because we would not know what type of application it would have, what usage it would have. But for future years, this is something that we need to discuss and have some decisions made on this spring so that we can have that tool out for the future.
And that's where the, there may be more impact for FY '27 or beyond, is to understand how that transpires, but we wouldn't be able to do any of that modeling until we're through open enrollment.
Yeah.
I know what that looks like as far as head counts on insurance plans.
Amy?
I want to keep everyone, and I know you probably don't really know the answer to this, but when you cut down time on languages in middle school, how are you going to prevent, like, a decrease in language proficiency and how they're going to be prepared for high school? Because language is not really like gym class or something that you can do twice a week. It's like harder to learn something when you're only doing it twice a week and then you get that break. Because like, how would they go up in levels? And then in high school, where would they start?
Amy, it's a great question. And so the way we'd look at it is, we've done some surveying with other school districts, and we know this is a model that exists in other school systems as well. So we would look to their expertise to that, as long, as well as looking at what a proficiency model of language development would look like, because it would be our goal to design a program that when our students are leaving eighth grade, they will be leaving with a skill set around Spanish language that is comparable to what they exit with today. So this is where it's going to take some deep work, is where we're going to work with our colleagues that have had this experience and have developed some very effective models that are based on a three-year rotational model.
Thank you.
Great question.
John?
Thank you for the work you guys put into this. Was there any overhead cuts or proposed cuts to budget that, that wasn't employee expense?
Yeah, those are all the non-salary expenses that are outlined in this presentation and the previous presentation. So we've made many reductions in that regard.
That was in this presentation?
Yeah. So whenever you see salaries that are, you know, like, non-salary, those are those overhead costs.
But didn't you make some of those in the last budget update, too?
Yes.
Like you moved the vehicle?
Yes.
And you moved to a leasing option?
Exactly.
There was some technology reduction, which is in the last budget update.
Yep.
Does that, did that help?
There's some numbers I didn't understand, like telephone was 144,000, I think. Which again, I don't have the drill down details for that, but it just sounded very high. Same thing for office equipment.
Yeah, those are preset contracts that we have for those types of things. So there isn't, you know, and with our phone systems, those are things like, they have to function. There's no option to, to, you know, reduce in that sort of way. So we have to look to other variables. So that's where we've really sort of scoured revolving accounts and the offsets. And every time we do that, you have to know we're giving ourselves less room for the future. Every time we delve into our revolving accounts, whether it's a facilities offset or an extended learning offset, whatever it may be.
Joe?
Yeah, thank you, Superintendent. I do not have a question, not a chair, superintendent, but I did receive a question from a resident of Lancaster this morning, and I'm going to just qualify this question by saying that the nature and importance of this question hearkens back to the budget workshop. So apologies for not sending this question to you in advance, so you had advance notice that if you can't answer it, I understand. I'll read it verbatim. It's one question in two parts. Where is the line item for Witsen's and what is the additional cost for bringing them in versus one nutrition services director? Is that the $900,000 increase on page 73 of the budget workshop budget?
Mr. Mulcay?
And again, as I said, if you're not prepared, either you, Mr. Mulcay, I will certainly put it in writing and send it to you.
As I'm going into my budget document, Mr. Witsen, that is the beginning of our food services revolving accounts. So there's no impact to the operating budget, except for the fact that we are able to utilize some levers within food service to support the operating in the sense that our employees within that are obviously paid from that, but also their health insurance can be paid from that. Other things cannot be that might feel like they should be, such as utilities. If you step into that territory, you step into what I would say is a hornet's nest of what's called indirect cost rate, indirect cost rate. If you start to apply those to that account, then we're talking about our ESSA grants, we're talking about our IDA grants. So the way it was explained to me when I made contact with the school nutrition department last year was to sort of try to avoid those things in the future, because again, you step into a hornet's nest. Relative to the question of the increase, I just want to take a quick look.
Page 73, under Contracted Services.
Yes, so when we built the budget last year, we built the budget based on not having a food service contractor, because it was prior to the contract coming in. We pay Witsen's on a monthly basis for their contract. Their contract includes all of the procurement for all of our food and some of the supplies that go into our kitchens. So at the end of it, there'll be a decrease, and I just want to check our lines here, that there should be a decrease, if you look at it under provisions, provisions dropped from 664,000 to zero. So that money is allocated and shifted to the Witsen's contract, because they run all of our supply and the procurement for provisions, and it's some additional stuff, so.
Thank you, Superintendent, Mr. Mulcay, and I did apologize for not submitting that in writing in advance.
Happy to do our best here.
Who's got a question beyond that? I think you have another. All right, here we go.
Thank you. My, I guess my last question is, if you could just speak a little bit about the role of the middle school dean or the dean position, and what purpose, why we added that position a few years ago, and what impact that will have to remove those positions from our structures.
Thank you for your question. I'm thinking deeply about this right now. The reduction of the dean's position is a deep cut to the overall fabric of the school. There's a misconception that the dean is an administrator. And in fact, the dean is a Unit A employee, just like all of our classroom teachers are. The focus of the dean is front-facing student interface and helping and working with students on all the complexities that are involved when you have 230 souls walk into your middle school. So in that way, with the reduction of the dean's positions and the responsibilities they have with our advisory teams, with code of conduct, with social and support groups, with covering for teachers in situations, the reduction of those principals, those responsibilities are going to fall on the shoulder of our principals with the reduction of the deans. And as a result, the principals will be spending more time in those activities and less time on the educational leadership that we really need in our schools. So when I say that we're making some deep sacrifices, that's a great example of one that is being made, and it's not something we want to do. I am putting it out there as a temporary step. I'm putting all of this out there as temporary to help us work through this difficult time. But yes, those, we view those as critical positions to the district, and we got to that point because if we went another direction, then we're compromising our intervention model that would compromise our qualification for the PRISM grant and the support we're going to get there. Or we eliminate more classroom teachers and increase our class size standards to higher numbers, 26, 28. So we made that very difficult decision based upon protecting the classroom. And like I said, it is February 12th, and ideas are going to come in tomorrow, and ideas are going to come in over vacation, and after that, they might even be coming in post-budget vote. Once they come in post-budget vote, we have to operate within the constructs of what that bottom-line number is in the budget. But we're going to continue to be relentless problem solvers in how we address these challenges.
I want to recognize how much work you've done and how much effort you've all put in. You've probably been not sleeping much. I know you're not sleeping much, you told me that. You're not seeing your significant others. So here's, here's a couple of things I want to lay on the table, and this isn't really for this room, it's for the record. Lita, can you go to slide 32, or Ross? It's like, it's the one with the most recent percentage increase, 5.28.
Right here.
Yeah, okay, so I think that this is happening across the state. This is happening in almost every municipality. This is not a result of something Neshoga has done wrong, or that we have mismanaged anything, or that the towns are not doing their job. This is happening statewide, it's happening everywhere. I think that there's a record number of overrides that are being requested this spring. One of our towns is likely in that situation, and that is Bolton. So even if we had come to Bolton with a 0% increase, they would have needed an override just for their operational costs increases. And so I want to put on the table that this is something significant, it is something that the state needs to manage and do something about, and we all need to get active in lobbying and having all of our voices heard at the state level. Because there is revenue to be shared, and our schools are the most important thing that the state can offer. The NAEP test just came out and showed that Massachusetts is providing excellent education. We don't want to see that slide back. Bolton, however, is heading toward an override. Lancaster, you can see that their increase- Lancaster, you can see that their increase, 7.47, is probably not what they want to see. Stowe's rate of increase is lower, but Stowe's number is still the highest. And so these numbers are hard, and we need to be responsible, and not just our leadership, but everyone, every single one of us, right down to the last staff member, needs to recognize that our communities can only give so much. And I feel very strongly about that. So, if we ask too much, we will see these budget votes fail in May. And if the budget votes fail in two of the towns, and I have heard prominent members of one of our, a couple of our communities over time seek to actively make them fail, if, if these budget votes fail and people do not attend town meetings and support these budgets, we will be headed into the 112 scenario that Kirk identified, and it will be of epic proportions. Okay, so what we're experiencing right now, you can double it if our budgets fail. So, not to be hellfire and brimstone here, but I think we are striking a balance here tonight by saying we need to make deep sacrifices, because the townspeople are building a brand new high school for everyone, and it is an important investment, and we need to keep that in mind, that this budget needs to remain manageable while also providing an excellent education, which I think you guys have threaded the needle here. And if all things go the way that you are predicting, and you're pretty good at this, I think that this is the right solution. So, please just keep in mind, if you're listening to this, that this is incredibly complex, and I hope nobody tries to boil it down to anything simple, because it's not.
Is there anything templated that you could share with this group to be active in social media versus all of us coming up with our own messaging? And maybe you do this already, and I just don't know, but like, is there kind of a format you could give us to, so we're all kind of communicating the same message, something we can tweak on our own to make it more passionate, but can reach our social?
People are going to think we game plan that question.
What?
People are going to think we game plan that question, because I think it's an important way to wrap the meeting. And currently during this meeting, our communications specialist, Ms. Bridget Hanigan, is taking notes, watching things, she has these presentations. I will be working, I will be going to the Worcester County Legislative Meeting tomorrow, where we will have 15 of our state representatives at that meeting. Upon my return, her and I are sitting down to build that exact tool. And so I'll be distributing that tool to our committee members. I will continue to share my advocacy letters with you as I share them with our state representatives, and when I share them with you, that means they are open to share. And we just have to continue to work the problem. We've got to work the problem, we've got to work the problem. So yes, we will get to those tools. We're coming up on school vacation week, everyone have a happy school vacation week, by the way. I have one to announce before we close tonight, but we'll make sure you get what you need to carry the message.
All right, guys, understanding the hour, I'm going to maybe push the agenda.
I need to make one last announcement.
I am on my agenda, but I have one more on my agenda, but maybe at the time I'll let it wake up.
Yep.
So guys, no unfinished business tonight, but there are, there is a spot for subcommittee reports, so is there anything that any of the subcommittee chairs want to add to the record here? Okay, so one final announcement?
Yeah, the final announcement is a weather announcement. So we are watching the freeze line very, very carefully right now. There will be a call going out at 5:30 in the morning, only if we have a delay. If there's no delay, there will be no call, school will start on time. But the key here is, Mr. Frozdick and I have a 4:30 meeting scheduled, 4:30 AM meeting scheduled to discuss road conditions. He will be on site in Neshoba at 3:30 AM. If roads are drivable, we'll have school. So it all depends on the timing of that freeze line and...
Eight o'clock.
Yeah, there's very, is it, are you seeing eight o'clock now? I've seen it wiggle from 3:00 AM to 8:00 AM. So if the freeze line is coming later, we will clearly have a delayed start tomorrow, but stay tuned, a call will go out at 5:30 if that's the case.
All right, great, thank you so much for your time. I have to move to adjourn for a second. Nice job, Cohen. All those in favor? Any opposed? Good night, everyone.